Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this Wednesday meeting of the Committee of the Whole of the Bloomington Common Council. This meeting will address Ordinance 20-03 to amend Title IV, the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Business Licenses and Regulations, adding Chapter 4.32, non-consensual towing business. We are going to have a motion on how to conduct the meeting this evening that might differ just slightly from our usual proceeding of a Committee of the Whole, but before we do that, I would ask that perhaps we have a brief presentation on the amendment? Or do you want to move to the procedure first?
We want to consider the procedural portion of this, just so the public knows.
Okay. If we could have that motion read then, please.
I move that the Council suspend the rules to structure and limit deliberations on Ordinance 2003 in the following manner. An initial presentation by Council staff to review the ordinance, to respond to unanswered questions or concerns, and to discuss possible amendments. Then, if the sponsor so chooses, introduction in turn of Amendments 1, 2, and 3, each to be followed by the normal period of Council questions, public comment limited to five minutes per speaker, and Council debate on the specific amendment before a due-pass recommendation on each amendment is entertained. During Council debate on any given amendment, Council members are free to make comments or ask questions of any stakeholders in the audience that are willing to speak to the issues. A period. Then, we will have a period of Council questions on the ordinance as a whole, either as written or as amended. Then, we will have a period of public comment on the ordinance as a whole, whether or not it has been amended, with each speaker limited to five minutes per speaker. Then, we will come back to Council for Council debate on the ordinance as a whole, amended or not, with Council members free to make comments or ask questions of any stakeholders in the audience willing to speak to the issues. Each line of questioning or discussion is limited to no more than five minutes. Finally, after the debate has ended, a suitable motion would be entertained either to continue committee deliberation on February 26, or to return the ordinance to the Council with a due-pass recommendation. While no specific time limits are placed on Council members themselves, they are asked to be concise and mindful of everyone's time when asking questions or making comments subject to the discretion of the Chair.
And this must be seconded? It's debatable and amendable and needs a two-thirds majority to pass? So it has been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to structure our debate this evening? Councilmember Bollen?
Yes, I'd like to know, like, will we be able to have sort of the back-and-forth we talked about, you know, at the previous meeting, so that we can get that conversation going about, you know, whether or not these amendments alone are sufficient, or we need more?
That's what the motion was all about.
Yes. And again, at the discretion of the Chair, too, we will keep things moving. We want to make sure that we have that robust discussion, but we will be mindful of the time that we're taking in deliberating on any possible amendments or changes.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to make a comment or have a concern? All right, are we ready to call the question on the motion on the table? If we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Rollo?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Bollen?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes. All right, let us begin with our presentation.
Thank you, Council. My name is Stephen Lucas. I'm the Deputy Administrator/Deputy Attorney for the Council Office, and I'd like to give an update on Ordinance 2003. I thought I'd start with just a brief history for those new to the issue and for the Council members about how we got where we are today. I first wanted to note that although this is a Council-driven initiative, Councilmember Sims is sponsoring this legislation, this ordinance was drafted in close collaboration with the city administration, given that they are the ones that are going to have to implement and administer this program. So I wanted to make that note and say that there are a few folks here from the administration who can answer questions tonight if you have them. This ordinance was first discussed at a Council work session on January 10. It was released in the Council's legislative packet that same day, which gets sent to a distribution list that the Council uses to alert the media and public of what we're doing. It was emailed directly to Monroe County Towing Companies on January 13 to alert them of this ordinance and to invite any feedback or comments that they might have at that time. It was introduced on January 15 at a regular session. It was discussed for the first time at a Council meeting publicly at the Committee of the Whole on January 22. As a result of feedback at that meeting, we included additional stakeholders and directly contacted them and invited them to review and comment on the ordinance, and those stakeholders included the Downtown Bloomington, Inc., Chamber of Commerce, Indiana Legal Services, District 10 Probono Project, South Central Community Action Program, and the Monroe County Apartment Association, in addition to the same towing companies that received the first notice. Those same folks received another email alerting them of tonight's meeting and inviting them to this discussion tonight. And I also wanted to note that the effective date currently in the ordinance is July 1st, so while final action could occur as early as next week, this ordinance wouldn't take effect as written until July 1, giving us time to address any other issues that come up. So with that background, I wanted to kind of tell you what the scope of feedback is that we've received at the Council Office. So beyond the comments that you all have heard at public meetings, we've received written comments from three stakeholders, two tow companies and the Monroe County Apartment Association, and then have had less formal conversations either before meetings or after meetings with some of the folks here tonight. So that's the extent of the feedback, and as a result, I will talk about that in a second. I also wanted to briefly remind everyone of what the purpose of this ordinance is. There was a question, I think, at the January 22 meeting of why this is needed or what the purpose is, and it's largely covered in the whereas clauses, but it might have received kind of short shrift at that first meeting, so I wanted to go over that again. The purpose of this ordinance is stated in the whereas clauses would be to primarily prevent predatory practices, and these predatory practices certainly aren't something that all tow companies engage in. We're not saying that at all, but these are the practices that we're trying to discourage. And those practices would be to refusing to release a vehicle before it's been removed from private property, towing vehicles a great distance, engaging in kickback arrangements, or charging exorbitant storage or towing fees. Another purpose of this is to increase safety by providing a known set of rules that all can follow in the community. You can imagine how these toes lead to circumstances where conflict might happen, and so part of the benefit of having this ordinance in place is that everyone's on the same page, they know how these toes are supposed to go, and they know what the rules are. Finally, a big part of this is providing consumer protection to help provide protection for the community's most vulnerable residents. Some of those provisions include a cap on the fees that companies can charge, as well as requiring the release of the vehicle for a certain amount. So just wanted to kind of re-center us on the purpose of this ordinance. Before I get into a number of questions or suggestions or concerns that have been raised through various ways that so far haven't led to any recommended amendments from either the sponsor of the legislation or from the administration who has to put this all into practice, and I'm going to go through each quickly in respect for your time, but if you have, if you'd like any more detail, just interrupt me and I'll expand. There were various comments at previous meetings questioning the need for a contemporaneous written authorization when these toes occur, and that is required under Section 4.32.100 if you're following along on the ordinance. I think both the administration and the sponsor of the legislation would oppose removing this requirement or amending it somehow. This is a section that provides protection to vehicle owners by requiring a record of the tow when it takes place, and it also requires property owners to affirm that they're liable for any damages for improperly towed vehicles. This is an important part of the consumer protection purpose of the ordinance, and I believe the administration and the sponsor of the legislation would oppose removing it. There were general statements made at previous meetings that we've discussed before, that this statute somehow, or this ordinance somehow conflicts with state law. I haven't received any more specific feedback than that, and it's hard to respond to such a general claim. I can say that it's been reviewed both by Council staff and legal department for compliance with state law. We don't believe it conflicts with state law. There's nothing in our ordinance that requires someone to choose between complying with state law or this local ordinance, and I'll leave that there. We've received questions about the need for the insurance requirements included in the ordinance. Those are under 4.32.090, and specifically, folks have questioned why the city needs to be listed as an additional insured. I will defer to the administration if they'd like to expand, but to my understanding, this provision tracks what we require in our city contracts with tow companies for city-initiated toes, and the requirement that they list the city as an additional insured is an important way that we can limit the city's liability, and it shouldn't be too much of a burden on tow companies. This is something that we require elsewhere in our code and that the city has experience with and is our general practice, I believe. The next...
Sure.
When you say it's required elsewhere in our code, can you give that context, please? Thank you.
It's required in our contracts with tow companies that perform city-initiated toes. I'm sorry.
Okay, and that's the only other reference you were making there?
I believe so.
Okay.
Someone from the legal department can correct me if I'm wrong later on. There were calls at a few meetings for a centralized website or some way for tow companies and all these different agencies that perform toes to communicate or figure out who's doing these toes, where the vehicles are located. Personally, I think that's a very interesting idea. I think it could cut down on a lot of issues, but I also believe it's beyond the scope of this current ordinance, and including something like that in this ordinance would require much more work than I think was envisioned by the sponsor of the legislation, and maybe something that draws on people outside of the city. So it's an interesting idea. It's not something I think we should ignore, but I think it might be beyond the scope of what this ordinance can do. There was a suggestion made to increase the charge that tow companies can charge to folks for release of the vehicle from 20% to 30%, and this would be under 4.32.120, and maybe the folks that suggested that could comment more on it when the time comes, but I believe the rationale is that there is a cost to the tow companies, I believe for the drivers, that's sort of set at that percentage, so it neatly fits with a percentage that they have to pay, and it might make their business operations a little easier. There was a suggestion that the city somehow require or ensure that towing companies are maintaining appropriate Department of Transportation numbers and remain properly licensed. I believe the ordinance does this under 4.32.160. We don't say as much, but we provide for penalties for any companies that operate in a manner contrary to any federal, state, or local law. My opinion, and I believe the administration's opinion would be that we not get more specific than that, given that those are requirements that fall outside of our city code and that can change from time to time, so I think simply having a statement that says companies have to comply with federal, state, or other local laws is sufficient to cover this concern. There was a question by the Monroe County Apartment Association, and they wanted to ensure that emergency toes could still take place without 24-hour notice. This would fall under Section 4.32.110 and also touches on a state statute that typically requires a 24-hour notice before a vehicle can be towed from private property. There's a requirement to place a sticker on the vehicle, wait that time before you can tow a vehicle. There's an exception to that, and that exception allows property owners to tow a vehicle believed to be abandoned in an emergency situation, and an emergency situation is defined as a vehicle that interferes with a property owner's business operations or presents a hazard to health or safety, essentially. Nothing in our ordinance conflicts with that. That is state law. We can't prohibit that, and I don't believe the ordinance needs to clarify that, and in fact, we say under 4.32.110 that folks are still free to follow that state law. I heard a comment at a previous meeting about somehow applying similar regulations to toes performed by IU. I don't know exactly what they had in mind, but I just wanted to clarify that we can't impose any of these restrictions on IU or how they conduct these toes. Under state law, that's a separate entity, and we can't do that. Actually, one of the Council members raised an interesting idea about requiring some proof of hardship or some proof of inability to pay under 4.32.120, which is the provision that allows for the release of the vehicle upon payment of 20% of the fees and execution of a payment agreement for the balance. I think that's an interesting idea. I'm not sure how that would work in practice, given the possible inability of folks to provide documentation or some proof other than a statement that says they're not able to pay. I would point out that as part of this ordinance, the administration intends to release certain draft documents or certain sample payment agreements. So, for example, this provision references a payment agreement. I believe the city intends to provide a sample payment agreement that folks are, towing companies are free to use if they wish, and that payment agreement might be an appropriate place to put some sort of statement or affirmation that the person going that route isn't able to pay the full price for release of the vehicle. There were questions about who issues the fines under the ordinance and who hears appeals under this ordinance. The city legal department would be the department that issues the notices of violations and is charged with enforcing this ordinance, and the Board of Public Works would be the body that hears any adverse decisions as far as fines or license suspensions or revocations. An idea I heard from one of the stakeholders at a previous meeting was to have some other body hear appeals, and that body would contain or include a member of the towing industry. I'm not sure how that would work. I think the preference of both the administration and the sponsor would be to have the appeals heard by the Board of Public Works. It's a known body. They have an appeals process that's already in place, and any folks that come before the Board of Public Works would certainly be able to present their case how they needed to, which might include bringing other folks that they wanted to have come. There was a suggestion to charge a lower fee for the license after the first year. This would fall under 4.32.070. The administration reviewed this request and discussed it and doesn't believe the administrative burden would be less in subsequent years when they're looking at renewing licenses. They think the same amount of work is involved, and they would prefer not to charge a lower fee for renewal of the licenses. Similarly, a request was made to provide for a license with a term longer than one year. Currently, the city doesn't provide any license with a term longer than one year, and I believe the administration's preference is to keep it that way for consistency's sake, and they do provide terms shorter than a year, I believe up to a day, and the years as long of a term as we have currently in our code, so they don't want to extend that. Finally, there were comments made or concerns raised about requiring towing companies to accept credit cards. Simply put, the ordinance doesn't do this and can't do this under state law. There's a state law that says towing companies can elect to accept credit cards if they choose, but our ordinance doesn't require them to. So those, I know I went through those quickly. Those, I hope encompassed as much of the feedback as I've received. If there are other questions, I'm happy to address that, but now I'm going to move on to things that have led to amendments that are drafted and that may be introduced tonight. And I'll let the sponsor, you know, comment on these a little bit more when he chooses to introduce them, but I'll just briefly go over what the idea was that was raised. One of the main comments that I've heard is that the ordinance should be amended to change the base fee from $125 to $135 for a tow. This would, I've commented on this before, this would match what other public agencies are allowing companies to charge when they perform toes for those agencies, and would make things simpler for the companies and possibly for the public who might not distinguish between who's towing their car or why their car is being towed. They just simply see that their car's been towed. So I think uniformity does have its value. I've mentioned before that doing this, there's a recommendation from the administration to also make a similar change under Title 15, and I think the preference would be to do that as a separate ordinance. It's something that could be wrapped into this ordinance, but I think it might be cleaner to do those changes as a separate Title 15 ordinance, but I just wanted to make that known. There was an idea put forward by the administration that deals with the non-renewal or the denial of a license, and you'll see this as amendment two if the sponsor so chooses to introduce it, but the idea here is that we had a provision that said a license could be suspended or revoked for violations of this ordinance, but nothing that prevented, that allowed the city to decline to renew a license if someone had been previously fined or found to be in violation of this, or to decline to issue a license in the first place if they are found to have violated similar provisions in another city, similar ordinance. For example, Indianapolis has an ordinance that this was largely modeled off of, and a towing company that has been fined multiple times under that ordinance, the city may not want to issue a license to that company here in Bloomington. So that's the idea behind that. Finally, there are just some non-substantive technical changes that Amendment 3 address. The last thing I'll say about amendments is that there has been a suggestion to add an administrative fee for towing companies to be able to charge to folks, and perhaps they can speak more to this for the need for this and for what this would go to cover. I don't believe this has the support of the administration or the sponsor of the legislation at this time, but given the chance to expound on the need for this fee, that may change. An ordinance has been drafted to allow the Council to discuss this if they want to, but at this time, I don't believe that amendment has a sponsor. So with that, I will just note again that some of the things that this ordinance does may necessitate a change to Title 15, which the administration supports. I mentioned the change of the price in the base fee from 125 to 135. Another change that I believe the administration would be supportive of is changing the rules for the release of a vehicle for a city-initiated tow. Currently, under Title 15, for a city-initiated tow, the towing company is required to release a vehicle without any payment. I believe the administration would support and would possibly recommend changing that to mirror whatever we do in this ordinance as far as a 20% payment or whatever that number ends up being, to provide consistency. It also recognizes that there's work that a tow company does, I believe, when they perform these toes, and provides them some compensation for that. One last note. I mentioned before that the current effective date of this ordinance is July 1 as written. Depending on when the Council, or if the Council takes final action on this ordinance, it may want to consider changing the effective date to reflect that there may be a month that has passed since the intended action date of February 5. So when that effective date was written, it was anticipated that this might be voted on on February 5. It's looking like it may extend until March 4, so the Council may want to consider an amendment to change the effective date to give not only the city time to create the documents it would need to create and to put this into practice, but also to give companies time to adjust any business practices they need to work on to come into compliance with this ordinance. I believe that's all I have at the moment. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I noted before that folks from the administration are also here to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any Council questions regarding the presentation we've just heard? Councilmember Bollen?
Thank you, yes. So just a quick question about appeals. Can you go back to the, to the, there we go. Regarding appeals, you say that as it is now, appeals would be heard by the Board of Public Works. Is that any side in a transaction, the tow company or the person towed? Like I said, does a person who is towed, can they appeal that? And if so, is that to the BPW?
I believe, as written, our ordinance under 4.32.160 would just apply to adverse decisions of the city against a tow company. Someone who is aggrieved with an improper tow would be responsible for pursuing action on their own.
In other words, in small claims court? There's no...
Essentially, yes.
Thank you.
Council Attorney Rooker?
Thank you, Michael Rooker, City Attorney. Just to piggyback, I think what Stephen said is exactly right, though, of course, I would want to point out that if the city had engaged in an enforcement action against a tow company and shown that the tow company was in violation of Title IV, that would be really an important piece of evidence for a citizen who is trying to show in a civil action that he or she had wrongly had their vehicle towed, if that makes sense. So I think they're related, they're different legal actions, but certainly one would have an impact on the other.
Thank you.
And I'd like to add to that, if I could, I think it's relevant, that under 4.32.100, the contemporaneous written authorization, a property owner authorizing a tow has to sign a statement that says that they would be liable for any damages of the vehicle owner for any improper toes, so it provides the vehicle owner with another avenue for redress.
Thank you.
Any additional Council comments on the initial presentation? All right, seeing done, I would like to turn now to the sponsor to see if there's anything you would like to add or begin the amendment work?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Lucas, for your presentation. We would like to introduce, start the introduction of the amendments, and this is number one. I move, due pass.
All right, we have a motion for Amendment 1. Do we have a second? We have a second?
Thank you. Amendment number one of Ordinance 20-03. The proposed amendment is as follows. For Ordinance 20-03, Section 1 shall be amended by amending Section 4.32.130, which is towing and storage fees by 1, changing the amount 125 to 135 in Section 4.32.130, subset A1, as well as, and this is a housekeeping, adding the word dollars after the words 25 in Section 4.32.130, subset A3.
All right, that is the...
So it provides the vehicle owner with another avenue for redress.
Thank you.
Any additional council comments on the initial presentation? All right, seeing none, I would like to turn now to the sponsor to see if there's anything you would like to add or begin the amendment work.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Lucas, for your presentation. We would like to introduce, start the introduction of the amendments, and this is number one. I move, do pass.
All right, we have a motion for amendment one. Do we have a second? We have a second?
Thank you. Amendment number one of ordinance 20-03. The proposed amendment is as follows. For ordinance 20-03, Section 1 shall be amended by amending Section 4.32.130, which is towing and storage fees by 1, changing the amount 125 to 135 in Section 4.32.130, subset A1, as well as, and this is a housekeeping, adding the word dollars after the words 25 in Section 4.32.130, subset A3.
All right, that is the amendment. Do we have any council questions on amendment one? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
So just to clarify, the $135 figure comes from what IU and what the county government allows to be charged, is that right?
My county. And it makes it consistent between the three entities.
Okay, thank you.
And I will, and this is probably not the time, but also the city ordinance that's current, that the city-initiated tolls are 125, will also have time in the future to amend that to reflect what we're talking about tonight.
Additional council questions? Seeing none, we go to the public. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak on amendment one. Feel free to come to the podium, state your name.
Mark Lockley, I'm a local real estate developer. I think this is clearly a property rights issue. I find it interesting that the city of Bloomington and IU can charge for parking ticket and make tickets that are binding and tow cars from its lots, and yet it's impinging on the fact that as a private property owner, I can't possibly, potentially remove cars that are in the way of the parking spaces for my residence, especially in, most of our properties are urban, and therefore, because of our approvals, we are limited in the total amount of parking that we're allowed, and so parking is already very tight. Most parking spaces, in fact, for the 250-plus units that we have, all of our parking is assigned, and we have mixed-use developments that have public and private parking side by side, and we have people outside public who park in residence parking spaces. As an example, at Park South, at Hillside and Henderson, we have people that are going to the restaurants, not necessarily, or in the shopping in our area, not necessarily to ours, but to others around there that park in the residence parking spot. Sometimes they leave it there for a couple of hours, sometimes they leave it there overnight. We've had cars left there for weeks at a time as we're trying to get a hold of, you know, to find out who owns it. And in this way, we're not able to move these cars that are in very clearly marked, assigned residence parking. We've had cars in that same development that have blocked, literally been parked and literally blocked the entrance into the development. They just decide to park and they're going to go grab a bite to eat, and the residents can't move, can't get into the parking and out of the parking, let alone the parking spaces. They literally park in the middle of the intersection, and therefore, we're not, sorry, the entrance into the development. And we would potentially not be able to move those people. I find that very disturbing. You know, the other thing in being held liable for the tow, I find that to be, I find that hard to believe that that would be possible, because who's to say damage on a car happened from the tow or happened from a previous accident or a previous incident? We could take, we could maybe make the tow companies take pictures, but that only protects the outside of the vehicle and not what has happened underneath, if there was, you know, previous damage to suspension and to frame and whatever, and therefore, I'm held liable, and this is, I just find it very, a lot of gray, and it kind of disturbs me, again, because we have a number of mixed-use developments that are urban, and even some that are suburban. And I'll give you an example, we had a vehicle that was abandoned, or appears to be abandoned, in one of our parking lots, again, in assigned parking, which we had towed, and it's been sitting at the tow company for over two months. That would have been sitting in my parking lot for over two months, and therefore, I'm not able to move it. I just find that, again, very disturbing.
And Mr. Lockley, if I could stop you right here, what we're debating is amendment one, which has to do with the fee.
Oh, the fee, all right. My apologies.
No, that's my fault for not catching you sooner, but you'll have plenty of an opportunity to talk about the amendment as a whole. Right now, we're taking the amendments one at a time.
Just for the fee? Well, then I will recuse myself and come back later.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak from the public on this amendment, which has to do with the fee? Please.
My name's Cody Chandler, I'm with Chain, Automotive and Towing, I'm the owner. I would like to hear more of a clear breakdown of that fee. That just includes a basic charge of 135. Due to the nature of this kind of towing, the special treatment for this towing gets nine out of 10 times, we have to use special equipment with dollies, gojacks, and that's an additional fee on top of that. I'd like to hear some clarity on that.
Okay, thank you for that. We will probably get to that with council questions.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Are you saying that that's the $25 administrative fee, or are you saying that's part of the 135 fee that we're, okay, so this is about the 135?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And just a note to council, when we get to the council comments, we are free, this is going to be the nature of the new structure of the rules, to ask any of the stakeholders who make comments, any clarifying questions, so we will have that opportunity. Any other public on this particular?
Yes, ma'am, my name's Max Stryker, owner of Stryker Towing. I'd also like some clarity on the 135 base tow. This particular type of towing, non-consensual, as so stated here. My company policy is that we dolly every vehicle, whether it's front-wheel drive, rear-wheel drive, all-wheel drive, e-brakes on, five-speed vehicle. So our extra equipment charge would, dollies would fall under that category. In our case, we use them on every vehicle regardless of drivetrain condition, flat tire, you know, whatever the case is. So I just want some clarity on what that base fee can include or is including, and if there's anything additional to that base fee based on our current company policy. So that's a kind of good insight on what we do for us, so.
Great, thank you. Anyone else from the public with respect to amendment one?
If we could also ask other people to line up so that there's less time between speakers? Thank you.
Hi there, my name's Jacob Padawan again, I'm with Tow Time Towing. I would like to add a little bit of clarity for these two. The 135, according to the ordinance, I'm, the way I understand it, is the base tow. They're allowing us dollies for $35 in addition for special equipment slash dolly fees. One thing I really want to focus on is the fact that this type of towing has so much more overhead, whether that be insurance, whether that be what the driver's responsibilities are to police those lots, and I want you guys to carefully consider the fact that IU does all the policing of their own lots. So when we've already established that 135 plus the 35 for dollies, plus the 25 for administrative fee, plus 25 for daily storage, when we establish that, we're already establishing that rate as fair and customary, based on the fact that the tow company that is contracted through IU has to do zero of that policing. IU staffs, all those people, they do the tickets, they do everything like that, and then they call the tow company, we show up, pick it up, and leave. That's it. So when you're talking about private lot, and the tow company has to do the policing, it's a responsibility and a liability for us, and we now take on all that overhead, somewhere we got to make that up. I do like the clarity idea for the 135. I understand that the clarity for the public is kind of important, I really do see the value in that. Now, the administrative fee is where I would look at, increasing and not having a consistent charge. Every company's charge is their overhead, their insurance, the type of trucks they use. One man might drive a $5,000 tow truck, one man might drive a $95,000 tow truck, okay? The insurance for one company might be 2,000 a month, the insurance for another company could be 30 grand a month. You guys don't understand the overheads as well as maybe we do. And what I wanted to say is, based on my company's experience, if I have to fall in line with the $135 base tow fee to match IU, which I agree, makes great sense as far as, yeah, consistency, right? But in order for us to do that, I believe that the administrative fee needs to reflect our extra administrative duties. So if we've already determined that $25 is fair as far as the IU tow goes, I believe we need to add an extra 40 to our administrative to cover all the administrative fees that our companies take on to do all the policing for those tows and reliabilities and everything. So I would structure it, if we have to match the 135 for the tow, 35 for dollies, and the $25 in storage and all that, I really, really, really need to push you guys to understand that administrative fee needs to fall in line at about $65. That's already the fair and customary charge, around $220 that we're talking about this town charging anyway. Your average impound is between, like I said previously, 160 to 280 dollars, depending on how people charge the storage, whether it's by calendar day or whether it's by 24 hours, or, see, everybody, every company's different. So I do think it's important to find a structure, but the average currently, right now, for first day impound is 220, second day impound's usually like 260. If we structure it the way that I'm talking about, I believe it would be 235 for the first day, it would be 260 for the second day. So it stays in line with the average that everybody is currently charging, and I think the consistency, though, with the base tow being lowered, would definitely create clarity and stop the frustrations that people are having with inconsistent ordinances all over the place. And as of right now, that's all my comment for the base tow fee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment on amendment one? And again, I do remind people, when you come to the podium, please sign in as well as stating your name. At this point, we'll come back to council for any questions, and again, we may ask specific people who have spoken to clarify. Councilmember Bollan.
Has the dolly fee, what was the second fee, the dolly fee and the other one, what was that?
Storage.
No, no, in addition to storage, there's the tow fee, the dolly fee, $25 for?
Amendment.
Okay, which, that's a subject of amendment four, which is not sponsored yet, but I'm planning to sponsor it, just to talk about it. So are the, is the dolly fee considered in the law?
So Section 4.32.130, A2, allows a $25 fee for special treatment, including doling, and what I've heard is that that special treatment is typical, that most of, a lot of these tows have that every time.
It's a $25 as opposed to the 35 that he?
As written, it's $25 for special.
And there's no amendment yet to adjust that either?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions from council, from anything we've heard? Councilmember Scambolori.
Just to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, it's written for special treatment, and we talked about doling, what else constitutes special treatment? Please come up. And thank you for your patience with my question.
And if you know you're going to be answering questions that council may have, you may want to sit a little closer to the podium.
I absolutely invite the chance to talk about these things. Okay, so the special treatment and dollies can fall, the reason why I said 35 is because I'm trying to, again, consistency with the IU basis that they've already considered customary. So I'm not really talking much on what this ordinance currently is, because as it sits right now, I'm starting to disagree with it. So I do want to, I do want to target towards IU, I do think that's a very fair price point, and it's already been determined. As far as the special equipment, okay, you have skates. Skates are used to pull cars out of the parking space, they're basically like a wooden skate that you can put under the tires as you pull a car out, keeps it from dragging, keeps the axles from binding and everything like that, and then you can get to the front of it, that's special equipment. Sometimes you have to do that to pull them out of really tight places, because the dollies will be too wide, and you can't clear certain parking garage posts, stuff like that. So there's, there's, the dollies is part of special equipment, the skates would be considered part of special equipment, any winching that you might have to do to move that car, it's special treatment. There's so many different tools for that kind of stuff. There's also a thing called gojacks. Gojacks are mobile lift wheels for a car. So let's say you have an all-wheel drive, and you've got to move it out of a spot, you can put it on four of those gojacks, and then push it out of its spot and rotate it to where you can tow it and load it on dollies. So when you take into account all the special equipment that a truck has to be outfitted with, it's easily, it's pretty easy to outfit your truck with $3,500 worth of tools to do this type of towing, and that's just on the back of the truck. And if you really want to be picky, you can do more than that. I mean, there's so much stuff that you can add for, to do this job safely and securely for the vehicles, especially if you're stocking enough of those gojacks for a four-wheel-drive vehicle, each one of those is like $500, so that's two grand alone, just in that tool. Is there any other question I can answer, or do you want me?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay.
And a follow-up question for Mr. Lucas, who's otherwise engaged right now. Am I understanding correctly that this would be a $25 charge for each type of special handling, so a dolly would be 25, a skate would be another 25? Am I reading this correctly, or is it 25 maximum?
I believe it's 25 maximum.
I can tell you, it's not our general practice to charge double. If we did use skates and we did use gojacks, for a perfect example, one of the lots we tow from is behind the Bluebird, down that four-way alley, if you guys can imagine how tight that is to get a truck in there and then add a car to the back of it, you know what I mean? It's actually very complicated, and we do have to use gojacks a lot, just to get them to the alley where they can be in line with the truck to then go on dollies. It is not our typical practice to double up on those charges, however, our typical practice is to charge $40 for that, too, not 25, so.
Got it, thank you. That's actually really helpful.
All right, cool, thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Additional questions? Yes, Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Padawan, when you were speaking before, you were talking about the first day, the towing can be 245, and the next day is 260 or something?
Right. If we fell in line?
Will you go over that a little bit for me?
Yeah. So I tried to email you guys all this beforehand, and I don't know what happened, but, so if we structure the tow at 135, which matches IU, we would structure the special equipment handling, which is the same for IU, that includes winching, that includes skates, that includes dollies, that includes gojacks, whatever you're using to take special care of that car, if you had to, you can charge $35. Then you would have the $25 in storage that hits at midnight, or the next, like, the next day. You can't charge a storage the time it hits your lot.
I see.
And technically, that is also our general practice. As of right now, we do charge storage as soon as it hits a lot. I'm sorry, I pay for insurance on it, it's done by calendar day. I'm not opposed to changing that, but a lot of those fees for the storage and hitting the same day is what makes up an administrative charge that we didn't normally charge. So if we're talking about making structure to bring clarity and consistency to everything, I definitely want to help you guys with that. I feel like if we did match the 135 tow, 35 for the dollies, 25 for the storage, and not let it hit until the previous day?
Right. And that's, and that's why I was confused for a minute, because it went from like 240 to 265, it's because there's storage.
It's me adding, yeah, the first day would never hit storage if we followed in line with IU. So, and then the second day would add that 25 days of storage, so it should be 235, jump to 260. Another reason I believe that's fair was because, again, IU gets to ticket, like he brought up earlier, IU has the right to ticket $200 for one ticket, you know what I mean? Anywhere from 20 to 200, the city does 20 to 100, as far as I know. It's 20 for your first offense, it doubles after seven days if it hasn't been paid, $40 for the second offense, doubles after seven days if it's not paid, third offense is $100. So they're obviously covering their costs with tickets. IU obviously covers their costs with tickets, so, of policing these lots. So my question is, how does the tow company cover their costs of policing these lots? Because if you match it with IU's towing, what you're, what you're saying is that this is already approved for the tow, not the service that we're actually providing.
And when you say policing the lots, that means you're going out into?
Yes, that means we, that means we have?
Somebody who contracted you to find cars that are parked in property?
Yes, sir, yeah, that means we have to drive around, waste our fuel, our time, and search out all these cars that don't have permits or maybe parked illegally, or blocking entrances, or dumpsters, or whatever the reason may be, that those property owners actually give us a written contract, which is our consent to enter upon a property on behalf of, as an acting agent of that company. That is our consent, we have that, that's regulated by the state law already. And that's allowing us to enter upon those properties and do that policing. They give us a ton of reasons on why they want the car towed, it's our job to find those. We have a never-ending no-tow list, which is cars that are allowed on the property that may not actually have temporary or permanent passes, like any contractor, whether they've been marked or unmarked cars, painters, lawn care people, whatever it is. So they have to go through those lists, there's actually a whole lot of administrative issues with that, and the, the programs that we have to have to keep all that straight, the staff we have to have to keep all those things straight and train the drivers, then we also have to have night shift staff to really we also have to have night shift staff to release the car within, you know, the, when a, when a owner wants to pick up their car, we do need to release it within an hour, that's just good business practice. So we also have night shift, there's a lot of adminis, like, that's where the administrative burden is coming in, and it is massive.
Yeah.
So if we can't have it in the tow, we got to give it an administrative fee. There's got to be a fee built in there to cover our costs.
Thank you for explaining that for me.
This, maybe getting into other territory, I want to just kind of bring it back to Amendment 1, which has to do with the increase in the base towing fee, correct?
Right.
All right, so any other questions with respect to, again, what's in front of us with Amendment 1? We may have other opportunities to get further clarification on some of this additional. Councilmember Volan.
Well, just to understand the tow fee, again, I, I heard four different charges, and I don't know what the third one was. 135 is the tow, there is a dolly or otherwise special equipment fee, there is a daily storage fee...
And an administrative fee.
Okay, but I thought there was something separate from the administrative fee? Is there more, like, there's several things in the administrative fee?
Right, the administrative fee would cover literally all of our costs.
Okay. Then we'll talk about that in Amendment 4, I just wanted to, because I had heard that there was some, somewhere earlier in there, you talked about some fee between special equipment and daily storage, and I didn't know what that was.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, and I feel like that'll clarify it for the...
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
...people whose cars you tow as well.
All right, additional questions or any clarification from our sponsor? Councilmember Sims?
Actually, I think we have someone else up at the podium, sorry.
Hi, Ken Parish, Ken's Westside Towing owner. Clarity as, as far as the prices, we've talked a lot about special equipment, a lot of guys have brought these up, they take this, all this special equipment to do their jobs and do this and that. I haven't done private towing as per se in this legitimate thing in my business. I do a lot of private towing with IU, their metered parking that they do, that's the type of towing I do, which is the exact same practices in which they deal with now, in same private, small parking lots, same equipment on my trucks, dollies, skates, special equipment, extra work to get them out of the small parking lots. He talked about metering the, and I will agree with most of what he said, do you guys even know why we use these special equipments, for the most part? It's because we have no keys, we have no ownership, we have no access to this vehicle, we cannot put it in neutral, we can't assist to roll it, we can't turn the steering wheels, okay? So protecting ourselves, we buy extra equipment to protect us as much as we can as business owners, to keep from damaging vehicles. The skates, they allow it to slide, not to tear up transmission. The dollies, they raise them up off the ground, so they don't slide the tires and tear up transmissions as well. We also don't have to gain access to the inside of the vehicle, these are the special equipments that they're talking about, and why we have to use them. It is to protect ourselves and the consumer as well, because they've got a lot of money in their car, that is a huge value, a large asset to them, they take care of it. These are the same tools that we've carried on our tow trucks for 30 years. There is no special tools nowadays, there may be a couple new things, but it's all the same practices. The prices and fees change, that's part of the towing.
Madam Chair, we're talking about the base fee, the 135.
The base fee with the additional with the dollies and stuff, okay? I, I would just like to add comment also about that with the 135. I think the 135 is a great price, we talk about policing parking lots, and he mentioned IU and making it a subsidiary to that. IU does do that, they take care of that, okay? But if IU student doesn't pay for their car, IU pays me. They go after the student at that point in time, not me. They take responsibility of that tow. These people with the private towing, if they want paid for monitoring, and this is just my opinion, I agree with everything he says except for this, if they want paid for policing, they should maybe talk about that with their contract holder, their property holder. If you want me to police your parking lot, you pay me this amount of dollars to take care of my administration fees. It's no longer free for the parking, for just the, the property owners. I really honestly wish that there was a lot of property owners here that has private towing, who could speak on their behalf. I think that's a huge asset for here, but as far as pricing, I, I disagree with that wholeheartedly, and I am a toer in Bloomington, and I don't think they, anybody should have to pay for the policing of parking lots they don't own. That's just my opinion.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan?
Yeah, I mean, I'm interested, there's at least one property owner here, I'd like to hear some sense of how they feel, and Mr. Lockley, if you've got a minute, and Mr. Carmen might be able to speak on behalf of property owners, too. But the question is, as a property owner, do you mind contracting with a tow company as a separate dollar amount for the policing? Did you, did you hear his problem?
Yeah. We do things a little differently, is that our staff, we don't allow our tow company to monitor.
So, okay.
We do our own monitoring, so the, a tow can only happen if one of our staff calls into the tow company.
Thanks, that helps. So then I asked a question for staff, does staff have a problem with the price of monitoring be something that's unregulated and between the tow company and the private property owner? Now, that's what, what they said is at IU, which is a state entity, which does, literally has their own police force, they patrol and monitor their lots, and they call in the tow company. But in the past, we've just assumed that the part of the, the cost of a tow, it's, the task of monitoring a lot is entirely in the cost of the tow. And what this gentleman said was that, you know, maybe that shouldn't, that's something that we should expect the property owner to pay a fee for monitoring. Does staff care whether that stays unregulated, or does staff want to see that regulated, too?
I'd point out, I, I just, I'm trying to wrap my head around how this would work.
Yeah, me, too.
4.32.130e makes it unlawful for a person, including a tow company or tow truck operator, to offer to pay or rebate money to a, the owner of a parking lot for the authority to tow from that lot.
It's the other way around. It's the other way around, we're talking about...
So it doesn't sound like what you're saying is what's prohibited here.
Right, what I'm asking is, it's not, it's not been contemplated, what I'm asking is, if a private property owner wants to separately contract with a tow company, to pay money to the tow company for monitoring, does staff have a problem with that remaining unregulated entirely up to the two entities?
So, just in response to that, the premise strikes me as bizarre, and let me explain to you why I think that is. Under the ordinance, the tow company can't serve as the entity that fills out the contemporaneous written authorization that says this vehicle needed to be towed from this lot for X reason. That needs to be done by somebody other than the tow company. So I suppose if a business owner wanted to pay a tow company to not sign that authorization, and then pay somebody else to sign the authorization, but the tow company would police the lot and not the person signing the authorization, I guess in a way that would be permissible, but it strikes me as strange, you would probably hire someone else to be the person who's policing the lot to make sure that when a car needs to be towed, it's towed out of the lot.
Are they understanding my question?
Perhaps I misunderstood it.
I need some help here, because I don't know that I'm getting it across.
I'll go first.
Do you want to address?
I'm, Madam Chair. I was going to respond to Mr. Volan's question, but I have...
Councilmember Sims may want to make some clarifying about the amendment.
Actually, what I'd really like to say is that Amendment 1 is about the towing base fee, raising it from 125 to 135. Okay, and I think that was done for two reasons, A, because we've heard from some of our companies, and B, is because, and we mention IU, but understand that that is also the base fee for Monroe County, and we're being consistent. So there is no wondering which entity tow, which fee is which fee. So this is Amendment 1, this is raising the, the fee, 125, the base fee, to 135.
Okay, well, the, the problem is that what's come out of this is, like, why is that fee the way it is?
Well, no, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, just that, I mean, in the case of Monroe County and IU, these are both agencies with police powers. And because they have police powers, they do their own monitoring of places where people park cars illegally.
My comment there is, being a 33-year employee at Indiana University in facilities, the process is parking operations that initiates all this.
But the point is...
And then parking operations, depending on some of their rules, which is multiple ticketing, will in fact call IUPD, and many times, they'll just give them another ticket. Then they'll, then they'll call IUPD, and it is them that authorize the tow. Parking operations cannot, but they're the ones that initiate it. So, I mean, I'm not...
You're, you're making my point, that the...
I'll defer to Mr. Lucas.
I believe that's incorrect.
Pardon?
I believe that's incorrect.
Well, we can debate in just a second, thank you.
To more directly answer your question, as I understand it, you're asking if it's okay for property owners to pay the tow companies to police the lots?
Correct.
Outside of the structure of this ordinance?
Yeah, does staff have any problem with that idea?
I don't believe the ordinance currently prohibits that. The section I referenced prohibits towing companies from offering to pay or rebating money to property owners for the right to police the lots, but I think what you're suggesting would go the other way, and as long as what they're doing doesn't run afoul of this ordinance, and it doesn't sound like anything would be, any fees would be passed on to the vehicle owner.
Right, I mean, that's what I was getting at, this was uncontemplated in the ordinance, and I wanted to know if staff, you know, had contemplated and not worried about it, or whether, now that this idea has come up, that this fee is normally something that everyone assumed was built into the base fee, which is what we're debating, and in fact, the tow companies are concerned that this base fee only works when the entity they're contracting with polices their own lot. And so I think you've answered my question, that no, staff doesn't really care what fee a, a private property owner contracts with, with a tow company for monitoring. Mr. Rooker?
Yeah, I think Stephen, Mr. Lucas summarized that perfectly, but I did want to just point out again, that there is this contemporaneous written authorization requirement, and that can't be signed by the tow company. So in many cases, hiring the tow company to be the policing entity will make no sense if you want to be compliant with the rules.
In other words, the, the private property owner still has to be able to sign the authorization the minute that the tow company...
Well, sorry, I'm going to cut you off right there, no, somebody other than the tow company, so it could be a security guard, it could be any agent, it can't be the tow company, but it could be any agent of the property owner. And again, the idea here is that, one of the practices we'll see is tow companies with non-consensual toes going around and trying to identify vehicles in nearly empty lots, and to tow those away. And we get a lot of complaints about that, you know? I was there for a very short period of time, it appears somebody was hawking the lot, just, just looking at it, and then I got charged, you know, $270, and it was an empty lot. So this is, again, a consumer protection provision, that's the point behind this particular provision. But I think we've gotten pretty far afield from Amendment 1, and I feel like I'm defending other parts of the ordinance, so I'm going to stop there.
I wish it hadn't gotten so far, but I appreciate the answer.
So, do you have clarification on the Amendment 1?
I just wanted to clarify that, when I brought this information up, I just wanted to be understood that I think these prices are fair and just for what the practices are being done, to try to keep these prices fair for the consumers that's actually being towed. That's the whole biggest thing. If these people want to go into a contracted rate with a private towing company to have their property policed and so on and so forth, I think maybe they should amend their contract with their customer, and build the basis for them to actually come out and do what they want. If that's, if that's what they want, that's fine, and agree with that, and I don't think the city's had any problems with it, to the point where, we're going to try to keep the prices amenable where people can still actually afford to pay it. That's the whole reason we've done this, in my opinion, I think that's why the price is our way you got them set. That's just...
Thank you. Councilmember Playhardy, you had your hand up a while ago, do you still have a question or a concern? Okay, Councilmember Vemon Smith.
Well, I want to clarify what Mr. Rooker has said a couple of times now, it, there isn't, there is an exception for private property that's residential, where the, in Section 4.32.100D, if the parking lot is for multifamily rental dwelling, which provides permit parking for 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and they issue a certain permit or hang tag for their tenants, then they can hire a towing company to monitor.
That's, that's correct, and this might go to Mr. Lockley's concerns, a residential rental dwelling unit, a multifamily dwelling unit like that, can have the tow companies act as agent, they can police the lot and tow from that lot without needing the written authorization from the lot owner, they can fill that paperwork out themselves. I believe, in discussing with legal, we believe the same would be true for a mixed-use development for the residential portion, so if there are spots reserved for the residents of that development, the same would apply to, to that as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. There was a gentleman that wanted to address something about the IU schedule.
Yeah.
I mean, we're doing back and forth, so I just want to give everyone a chance to speak.
Max Stryker, yeah, sorry about that.
No, no, you're fine.
IU Parking Ops initiates towing as well. Max Stryker, again, Stryker Towing. There's two different entities there, IUPD, who I'm contracted with, I'm not contracted with, the Parking Ops. They're supposed to share information, they do not, as I found out today, after about an hour and five minutes on the phone, trying to get a car back to a gentleman, that was initiated through IUPD, that Parking Ops was not aware of until I made them aware of it. So that the agencies are not corresponding on their end, and that's got nothing to do with us, we were just called, hey, come tow this car. This particular vehicle was blocking the bus lane, there was a lot of stuff going on over by the school music today. To get the information that we're required to give that car back to him, the owner of the vehicle that called, it, it took about 45 minutes on hold with, between the bursar's office, I think is how you say that, IUPD, and the Parking Ops, only one of which knew the vehicle was even towed.
Okay.
And this is within, you know, an hour. So those agencies aren't communicating, which doesn't have anything to do with us, but they initiate their own towing at any time. So it's two separate, it's under the same contract, but it's two separate entities calling for those toes, if I'm not mistaken, so...
Okay, thank you. My comment, may I comment for that?
Yes.
And, and I don't really want to get into a long debate with that. One of the changes with Indiana University, and I wanted to state on this amendment, is that the office is not centralized in Bloomington, and our Parking Ops really has to go through Vermont Street at IUPUI campus. So that may explain some of the miscommunication between entities, but that really doesn't go to the base fee that we want to make consistent with all the entities already. And please remember, the title of this when we started was predatory towing, okay? And there's examples, we're, we're getting complaints, we are trying to fashion this so that, we don't want to tow companies to lose money, but we think, we're trying to figure out what's fair. But I also know, and I gave an example last week, in an empty lot, two cars there, the car gets towed of the woman that's in church with me, and it costs her $230. Now you negotiate that down to $200 is what they let her get her car for, but this was about 40 minutes' time. So we're just trying to, this is not accusing any company, this is a, a, a verifiable example that I'm using. So we're just trying to get away from the predatory part, and we, I agree to the changing of the rules, so we could have some different debate in what we talked about before on planning this. So, you know, not really disputing anything, but a lot of the research and the legal parts we've kind of done, we just want to get more inclusive, if at all possible, so...
All right, at this point, are there additional questions before we go to council comments? Question? Councilmember Scambolari?
Well, I'm not sure what it is, it's a question to Mr. Lucas. Could you please put up the slide again, that talks about the specific practices we're trying to discourage? Because I think Councilmember Sims brings up a really good point, we're not opposed to towing, we're opposed to the predatory. So this is the litmus test, I think, for every amendment decision we make, so, thank you. Could you leave that up as much as possible?
All right, are we to a point where council is ready to make comments, or are we still in question time? All right, comments on Amendment 1. Councilmember Volan?
So, I've been trying to clarify, well, where does the base fee come from? I know that Councilmember Sims wanted to make it consistent with IU and Monroe County, and, you know, it seemed pretty straightforward at first, but then the question of, I mean, like, I have learned an awful lot about towing, by the way, I lived in Town Manor, in that place you used to tow behind the Bluebird, I've had four bouncers from the Bluebird move a car out of my, my reserved spot, and it was hard, it was hard as heck to get anybody to come and tow stuff, so I'm glad you have the fancy dollies and stuff to do it now, although I don't live there anymore. But I was trying to get to, what is that main fee for?
And, you know, I've learned tonight that we used to take for granted, as people who either have our car towed or are looking to tow somebody's car, that monitoring was something we just took for granted, you know? And I don't take it for granted anymore, I can see the logic behind a private property owner. Like, our property would have gladly paid a monitoring fee to get the cars out of the spots, because it's such a tight place back at Town Manor. And I still feel very strongly about that. So it helps me to understand that the tow fee, the $135 that they're looking for, is just the task, the physical task of moving it, and that we need to think differently, although I'm happy to report that staff doesn't seem to care, that that is not built, that that contract, that separate contract is not built into the tow fee, we don't have to worry about it. Because, you know, like, I think that made a difference, and that's why I was asking those questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. My response to that is that this body that we're sitting on passed a city-initiated tow ordinance and decided a $125 fee. And that is the way the ordinance reads today. What we're talking about now, and which will amend that fee, is up to $135, which is consistent with the other entities. So I'm not so sure what you want me to do and say, well, $3 is for that, and $7 is for that, and this equals up to $135. We think that is a fair and reasonable basis, which is what we pass in the city-initiated tolls. I am simply asking that we raise that to $135 to, my thought with, to somehow aid the towing companies, but more importantly, to make it consistent with the other towing entities and non-consensual tolls in the county. So I hope that, well, if I didn't answer, I don't know what else to do. We can defer to legal.
It was a separate point, I appreciate the explanation.
Additional final comments from council?
Second.
All right, it's been recommended and seconded. Will the clerk please call?
It's a committee.
I will start with my right, and we'll do a move-do-pass.
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 All right, Amendment 1 passes. We are now ready for...
What was the number?
Oh, that was unanimous?
Thank you. Madam Chair, move-do-pass, Amendment Number 2 of Ordinance 20-03.
It's been moved and seconded, and will you please present?
Thank you. What this ordinance does, and I'll read it. Ordinance 20-03, Section 1 shall amend, shall be amended by adding a new subsection D to Section 4.32.060, which is non-consensual toll license, toll business license application. The new subsection shall read as follows, and this is part D. Denial or renewal of license. The license administrator may decline to issue or renew a license issued under this chapter if the license administrator finds, one, the applicant has previously violated any provision of this chapter and has issued either an official warning or has been subject to any of the penalties listed under Bloomington Municipal Code 4.32.160A, or, number two, the applicant has been previously found to be in violation of any other similar law promulgated by a different governmental entity, or, number three, the applicant has previously had a license issued under this chapter suspended or revoked.
All right, are there any questions for Mr. Sims or for anyone with respect to Ordinance Amendment 2? Councilmember Bowlin?
I'd like to know what staff and tow companies think of it.
How did you hear?
I'd like to just hear what staff and tow companies think of the amendment.
So just to jump in for staff, you know, to some extent, this was a bit of an oversight on our part in the original draft, drafting of this ordinance. It was always our intention to reserve the right for the license administrator to deny a license to a bad actor, so this just cleans up the ordinance to grant that authority to a license, to the license administrator.
All right. Additional questions from council? Councilmember Bowlin? If there are no additional questions from council, we will go to the public to make a statement on Amendment 2.
My name's Mike Carmen, I'm not a tow company, do not speak for tow companies, but I don't like this amendment, at least the issue you've elevated, a warning as to cause for non-renewal. If it was a warning, why would that now become independently a cause for non-renewal? Because that's what it says, isn't it? I wish it was shown on the, so we could point to it, Jim read it, but as I heard it, it was, the administrator could deny a renewal because the company had had a prior warning. That just elevated the warning to the fence.
Thank you. Are there additional comments at this point from the public? And again, state your name and sign in, please.
My name's Jacob Padawan, again. I'm trying to keep a really professional stance here, but this is very quickly becoming what seems to be like an agenda of certain tow companies and the city. And I feel like it's, I feel like this ordinance is attacking and trying to prevent certain companies from conducting business in this town, 100%.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to make a statement?
Hello, my name is Devin King. I'm not affiliated in any way with a towing company, but I would just like to say that this amendment seemed like it left a lot of arbitrary decision-making up to administrators for deciding the appropriate punishment for a tow company found in violation. And I think that we could benefit from a more, more structured representation of what the punishments would be for repeated offenses, rather than leaving it up to the discretion of administrators in this case. And that's all I had to say, thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Martin Potite. I don't know where to start. I want to keep it just directly to this regulation part. A lot of you I don't know understand the extent of House Bill 1183 and how extensive and comprehensive it is. And literally, a lot of what you're trying to regulate is already there, and we have the Attorney General's Office to go to when there's complaints, very powerful knowledgeable entity. Pretty much the part that is being added is the max fee. That would, is kind of left out of the state law because it's customary and reasonable. Very important to address that, that's allowing some of the predator towing, most definitely. Have a major issue with the 20% thing, we'll address that at the proper time. But the other side of this is, a lot of this is adopted and copied from the state law, which already exists. It's already there, already enforced, all of the entities needed to do so are there. What you're adding is regulation of fees and burden to a private industry. When Indianapolis adopted their ordinance, this is a community, I'm going to estimate over, okay, a lot of people, we'll go with that. Also, probably close to 1,000 towing companies, and there was an absolute dire need for regulation. The issues were huge. How many of you know how many towing companies there in Bloomington? About 20. How many do private towing? About five to seven. Do we need a nuclear bomb weapon to regulate five to seven companies when the state of Indiana already does very well? You need very few amendments, you don't need to do all this regulation, you need all of this to control five to seven companies? This is like extensive. And my concern for it is, and why we have been pushing for an interactive conversation, is we're aware that you have very little knowledge and experience on this situation, and there has been, although our mayor's agenda is noble and many amazing things have been done, he has been using his legal department to attack anyone who objects his agenda. The administration, and I will address this in our discussion period, but I want to make you aware, has been hostile and unfair, and has used these type of things to attack this industry. I will address that at the proper time. I wanted to address the regulation thing, is there is plenty of tools to handle this, so it would seem that the need and drive from the administration and your legal department is a weapon, instead of, almost lazy. You can call the Department of Transportation, absolute professionals in making sure DOT licensing and everything is there. We have the state of Indiana, and remember what happened with the mayor's initiative to go after people in the county who didn't have the ability and money to fight off this entity? When the mayor stated in his argument about the state of Indiana getting involved in local affairs was almost to the level of hypocrisy, what was he doing to the members of the county? Although the mayor represents the city, and it would have benefited the city. But I want to show you a stance of why we are so concerned, that we want to make sure that the entities enforcing this and the entities handing out the fees have massive oversight. Make sure the judicial systems be included, make sure, especially in the license and appeals aspect, what we suggested is a licensed tow company be part of that for the purpose of fairness, and to give and let that appeals process know what could be a mistake and what could not be. If I get outside the scope of this comment session, please let me know. But I want to instill to you what our concern is, is basically, we are absolutely amazed of the interest and time you have dedicated to make sure we are treated fairly. Amazing, thank you. I will address the rest of this at the proper time.
Great, thank you. Anyone else have anything in addition about this particular amendment?
Max Stryker again here. I don't have an issue with the license fee. I believe you guys have it in there around $350, roughly a dollar a day, and it seems pretty legitimate to conduct business in this town. So you get that from, let's call it, half of the towing companies in Bloomington, the city generates $3,500 bucks, give or take, off that?
And again, if you want to just address us for now, we'll make sure that any questions get addressed.
So the city gets a roughly $3,500 for our licensing. However, non-consensual towing is not the only aspect of my business. We do participate in this type of towing, but not predatory. We also handle emergency breakdown, insurance. So who is to say that the warnings that are issued become offenses that revoke our licenses or suspend them? Who monitors that? Who determines what vehicles we tow are consensual or non-consensual? Who, is somebody going to watch us tow every vehicle in town? We tow, I have a very small company, three drivers, five trucks. We do about 45 tolls a day, consensual. And we do maybe two to three at most a day for non-consensual towing off private property. And that's, that's kind of a high figure, there are slower days of the week. So who determines what tolls that we're doing are against this policy? Are you guys going to hire somebody to watch me, watch Mr. Padawan, or Mr. Parrish, Mr. Hawkins, Mr. James? That seems like a lot of work to put in to suspend our right to tow in the town. I'm not really clear what the suspension entails. Am I not allowed to do business in this town? Or am I not allowed to tow off private properties? Or what's to say I enter a contracted property that Mr. Padawan has with Mr. Lockley's property for Mr. Lockley's resident that lives there? Who determines that I'm there to tow that car for the reason I'm there to tow it? Is somebody going to say, hey, what are you doing? And then I have to answer to who, exactly? Are any of you planning on being there at the time of the tow? And as I said, I'm a small company, I'm sure Mr. Parrish does closer to 100 and something tolls or services a day. So who determines what we're doing, when we're doing it, and why we're doing it? So I'm very curious as to how you plan on monitoring this particular amendment to warn, offend, and revoke and suspend. I think you should strike this entirely from your agenda, honestly. Again, I don't have a problem paying the city virtually a dollar a day to conduct business here. That seems fair, I guess, there's other businesses that have to pay that, food trucks and such, as I read in an article, I don't know if there's anything else, but I just don't see the point in, in, in how you're going to enforce that, and who enforces it? Is Bloomington Police Department going to say, hey, we think you did this tow illegally, now you can't tow in this town anymore? Or how does that read? So what does this entail? Who monitors it? Who enforces it? And who decides what car I tow when is against this action?
Okay, thank you. At this point, I think we have heard enough to be able to ask additional questions and have a more interactive discussion here. Anyone have any questions? Councilmember Rallo?
Questions evolved from the statements made by the tow companies. First of all, is this amendment, Amendment 2, does it duplicate state code? Is this redundant in some way? Okay. And then regarding the license administrator, to what extent does the license administrator review every tow? Or is this like a complaint-driven process? I mean, how is, how is that, the towing reviewed, I guess?
So I'll defer to the administration. I will point out that the license administrator under this ordinance is the Director of Economic and Sustainable Development, or his or her designee. They're the ones that are named as license administrators, so I'll defer to the administration as to how that'll play out.
Councilmember Rallo? Just so I can clarify your question, you're asking about enforcement, I think, here, is that right?
Well, specifically about this amendment and revocation of licenses and so forth, does, is this, I mean, the detailed work of reviewing every tow probably will not happen, will it? Or by the, by the license administrator? And, and is this a complaint-driven process? In other words, is it, is it, is, does somebody complain that this has, that they're in violation of city policy, and does that initiate an action? How does this go, how is this enforced, in other words?
I think that's exactly right. You know, we have a number of licensing regimes that have been set up by this body in conjunction with the administration, or various administrations over time, and they are complaint-driven processes, of course. You know, we don't have the resources to go around monitoring every tow, or every food truck, or every scooter on the street, or every taxi cab. So generally, we find out from a consumer that somebody's engaged in a practice that doesn't smell right, and then when we do an investigation, we'll identify a violation. So that's exactly right, yes.
Is there an appeal process in the investigation? Exactly how is that done?
Of course there's...
Before licenses revoked?
Of course, there's an appeal process as well. I don't, I think Mr. Lucas could speak to that, or I can, I'll let him explain that.
Sure, so under Section 4.32.160, it specifies when the license administrator can suspend or revoke a license. And I think when Mr. Rooker was referencing a cleanup, he was referencing this section, which authorizes the suspension or revocation, but didn't touch on renewal or issuance of a license in the first place. So this amendment largely just mirrors what the license administrator is authorized to do. It might seem odd for the license administrator to be able to suspend or revoke, but then as soon as the new year rolls around, they would have to renew that license and wait for further violations. So that's the, that's the idea behind it. Any adverse decision by the license administrator would be appealable to the Board of Public Works as an administrative remedy, and then beyond that, to the court system.
I say, thank you.
Councilmember Smith, did you have a question or need clarification?
I was going to ask if, if there's, yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. If there's a way to clean up the Amendment 2 so that it further explains to everyone what warned or fined or under... what warned or fined or under what conditions a license may be revoked? Is there a way to make it more obvious how that works so that it doesn't sound, it sounds a little vague at this point?
I don't want to speak too much on behalf of the sponsor or the administration, but I certainly think that any clarification that doesn't change the purpose of the amendment would probably be supported, if it just helps clarify for everyone. But depending on what the specific change was, I'd have to defer to the sponsor and what he wants to do. But certainly, councilmembers are welcome to propose amendments as they see fit.
Specific change.
Councilmember Sims would like to maybe address that.
I'm not sure. And I think we've established they are complaint-driven. And then there is an appeals process through Board of Public Works after the licensing at E S and D. But the licensing fee have all the rules and regulations entailed, and that is the licensing fee. I would like to go back to something I said earlier. You don't get suspended by just having a warning. Now, I would like for you to read that again. It says, number one, or D, denial or non-renewal of the license. Number one, the applicant has previously violated any provision of this chapter. Pause. And then it says, and has been issued either an official warning, or has been subject to any of the penalties listed under Bloomington Municipal Code. So I think it's not clear or, it's not been characterized properly with what this actually says, and that is not the intent. And I have other comments, but I think that addressed what we're talking about here. You're welcome.
Councilmember Volin.
All right. So this is kind of a rhetorical question that I'd like the sponsor to verify. But just to be clear, number one, this ordinance is for a license for towing businesses, non-consensual towing. So it's not a license for any kind of towing. It's just if they want to take part in non-consensual towing, they have to get a license. That's right, isn't it?
Well, there is a licensing process for city-initiated toes as well. Those are licensed. Are we, do we do that through?
Let me, let me.
But that's also non-consensual.
Well, let me jump in. Yes, is the answer to your question. This licensing scheme only applies to non-consensual toes initiated within the city. Non-consensual toes has a specific definition in the ordinance.
So it doesn't affect consensual towing that companies do with private entities?
Correct.
Number two. So number two, just to verify what Councilmember Sims said, in order for denial or non-renewal of a license to be a possibility, the person applying or renewing has to have already violated a provision of the non-consensual tow business license ordinance and has had to get another warning or another violation, fine. Am I understanding that correctly? So it's not like just any warning, it's a warning after they've already violated once. Is that correct?
That is one of the three sections that this entails.
Was one of them.
One of the three.
Well, let me clarify. So D1 in the amendment was written so that an applicant who has violated the ordinance has to have received a statement from the city that says you violated the ordinance. So it's not simply that they violated it.
And the violation comes with a fine.
Right. It can be an official warning or a fine, as written.
Okay. So somebody can have gotten a warning, and then they can get a second warning, and that will be enough to deny them?
I think as written, one warning would be enough to deny them.
No. Under D1, it says, the applicant has previously violated any provision of this chapter. So either a warning or a penalty. And has been issued, oh, so it's not?
The, I think the point is, the applicant who has violated the ordinance has to have either received an official warning or a fine before this would apply.
So that's not what I think Councilmember Sims said? Is that, was that your intent, Mr. Sims?
I thought I read D1.
D1?
Is that, yes.
In other words, so, okay, so D1, is the tow company correct when they say that just one warning is enough to be grounds for denial of a license or renewal of a license?
Well, I think it's possible, and I'll let legal address that, but I will say this. That is all part of the appeals process, is where facts would be addressed in that session. The city would have their position, and the person that's been fined would have an opportunity to appeal and bring the facts. And then that's when the decision, this is not an automatic, you got a warning, you're denied. It's not that.
I understand that.
Okay.
I'm just trying to understand that even one violation of a provision of this chapter, even if it does not result in a penalty, is enough for the administrator, the license administrator, to deny a renewal of a license, and they would then have to go to Board of Public Works? Is that your intent?
I'll give it to Leo.
So if I could just jump in really quickly, and I don't want to use language that's too strong, but that would be really an impossible sort of, that's just a ridiculous set of facts that would never happen. The idea behind issuing warnings, which is something that is extremely routine, is education. It's to say, look, we believe that you stepped out of line, there was no bad intent here. Let's talk about what the rules are. Let's learn what the rules on non-consensual towing are. That's a particularly important tool in an industry like this that's so dynamic, where people come and go from the industry all the time. We have new people coming into town and performing towing, companies leaving all the time. And so we would never, ever say, we're revoking your license, which is really the most extreme tool in our toolbox, based on an official warning that's just required to provide education to that particular entity. Now, we do want to bring that up if we end up in an appeal in front of the Board of Public Works, or after the Board of Public Works in front of the Monroe Circuit Court. We want to be able to say, yes, we issued warnings, then we issued fines, and we got to the point where we just really couldn't have this company doing business here anymore.
Mr. Rooker.
And if I tried to argue in front of the Board of Public Works that we ought to revoke a license based on simply a warning, they would laugh me out of this room every single time.
This is not providing reassurance to anyone who's affected by this. This says, the license administrator may decline to issue or renew a license issued under this chapter if the license administrator fines one, the applicant has previously violated any provision of this chapter, and has been issued either an official warning or a fine. It's, I'm reading the plain language here, and it says that one warning is enough for the mission to deny. Now, you may want to reassure us that we would never do that. Why can't you put that in writing?
Well, I will tell you this, you can write it however you guys want to write it, it's your initiative, but Mr. Carmen would fight me on that revocation, and he'd win every time at the Board of Public Works, 100%. That would be his win percentage there, so.
How do we know that?
Experience.
Councilmember Fleharty, do you have a comment? And then I do want to hear, I do want to hear.
I would just suggest that if the administration feels confident that a warning would never lead to this, why don't we change the language for the comfort of those in the industry to say a minimum of two warnings, or a minimum of a warning and a fine on another instance? I mean, I.
Make it a fine or offense.
Sir, please, just, just.
Yeah. That's really it. I'm open to amending this amendment to clarify that a single warning would not be the reason for denial of a license.
I think it's fair to say that the people here, or the stakeholders, are feeling that this is onerous, this is a little bit a step too far. And so I think the question then for us is, would we accept some amendment language in here to clarify and make it not seem like, you know, a minimal offense would lead to something pretty drastic? Councilmember Volin?
I feel like we have maybe identified the primary concern with this amendment. And while I want to hear from the sponsor, I would suggest that if he doesn't object to adding a second layer where there's, you know, because the way I read it had been, they had previously violated, and then they got a second warning or violation, that if he were amenable to that, that we could amend it before it was introduced next week, that it could be done, that it'd not be done tonight, but it could be done.
I can accept that if that's supported by our legal staff. And what I do want to say, if I may add, part of this is to ensure that we can have some control over bad actors. And just to say a simple warning, there are multiple different violations that we're talking about, and one or several are much more egregious than others. If it's proven, if that's the accusation or the fine, and then it's through appeals. And one of those examples, well.
Well, no, this is relevant, because if you say that there are major and minor offenses...
No, I didn't say that. I said there are some that once they are charged and then go to appeals, depending, for an example, and this is not toward anyone, but let's say that we're getting one that's close to assault or harassment over this vehicle. Now, that is one example, as opposed to my vehicle got scratched. And that's for the appeals process and the licensing administrator, once it has been brought up and then dealt with and appealed.
But you're describing what to my ears are major and minor?
I said I'm amenable to that if legal supports that. I've already said that.
The intent of the council and the administration that simply striking has been issued either an official warning or may accomplish what the council wants. So that the amendment would read, the applicant has previously violated any provision of this chapter and has been subject to any of the penalties listed under the penalties provisions. So that mean they would have received a fine previously before?
So you're saying a warning would not trigger this, but a fine would?
Correct.
Okay. Is that the, is the general consensus of the tow companies that that's more acceptable?
Hey, everyone, I'm looking for clarification. I agree with what they just said would be helpful, in my opinion. I needed a small clarification on the licensing, that if you meet conditions, that the license is automatically issued, that there should be no approval or denial or opinion of any city official in that. Settle the criteria. If it's met, the license is automatically issued.
Yes, if you have not.
I want to make sure that is clear.
Mr. Rooker, you say no? If they have not violated Part D here, one, two, or three, do they not get a permit?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. So that clarifies that question.
Councilmember Rallo.
Regarding Mr. Lucas's proposal for amendment, I wondered if we could have that in writing, if we're going to review and potentially give it a due pass recommendation this evening?
I have that in writing. I'm happy to distribute it if you need me to, but it would simply strike has been issued either an official warning or from the amendment.
I would sponsor that.
Mr. Sherman, do you have that?
Yes, so it strikes from has been true or...
Correct.
...to these and...
Correct.
Councilmember Fleharty.
I'm looking at Section 4.32.160, penalties and revocation of license, and this question will be for legal, either. Just looking at what constitutes a warning versus what constitutes a fine. It looks like in the event of a violation of any provision of the chapter, either a warning or a fine could be instituted in either case. It's, or either could be instituted in the event of a violation of a provision. Is that a correct reading? It's not like a warning is required before you could ever get to a fine?
Correct. The first action of the city doesn't have to be a warning. It can be a fine.
Okay. And I imagine that's like a discre, well, is it anticipated that that would be discretionary based on the sort of severity of?
I think based on the offense that you're talking about, that's up to the license administrator to determine whether a warning is warranted, yes.
Okay. So, okay.
While we're waiting for that in writing, you have another comment?
I guess from legal standpoint, the reason that they're trying to push this licensing agreement is because of predatory towing, or price gouging, or practices of such. That doesn't, as far as I know, that doesn't happen here, and I believe that nobody would bring that to your guys' attention more than a competing tow company. So if a fellow tower, like he used me for example earlier, if I heard that he charged somebody $1,000 to get their car back on the first day, I would bring that to somebody's attention. Every tower here that actually practices this type of towing is actually very reasonably priced in the same area. And as Sims said earlier, this is for control, and that's what I'm trying to get you guys to understand. It seems like they're trying to control who conducts this business and how they do it. And the state law is already very clear on what is breaking the law, what predatory towing is, what price gouging is. And does the city not already have control? If you break a law, you can get arrested. Is that not enough control? I mean, this seems ridiculous to try to fine people an astronomical amount, $2,500, $7,500. I didn't even read that part, because it drives me insane. But the point is, who controls what the hell that price is? That's not fair to anybody. If, you know, we're getting regulated to prices we already can't afford, and then you're going to take a warning and, if you get a warning for one simple accident, what you guys got to understand too, is that that's not always the owner of the company's fault. There's drivers that may not be fully educated yet. They're still in training, but the best way to learn is hands-on. You can't argue that. Some people can't just read a book and learn something. So mistakes will be made. The point is, they're going to wait for one and yank it. They're going to yank that permit, and that's just how I feel about it.
Okay. Thank you. And if I could just make a comment, I've not said a whole lot about this. I would hope that the clarification up here from our staff and from the sponsor would be that no one is looking for bad actors. No one is looking for an opportunity to run a honest, good, you know, you're playing by the book towing company out of business, especially since there are, what, about 20 in the whole city and about six or seven that do this kind of work that we're all here to talk about. And so anything we can do in this language to make that clear, that this is not an out-to-get-you, got-you kind of thing, but it is in place for, as I think what I heard the sponsor say, should there be a bad actor that is aggressively breaking the laws, disregarding fines, and would certainly be a candidate for having a license revoked. But that is not what this body or our administrative staff is intending to do with this legislation. Is that in any way clarifying or reassuring?
Yeah, I understand the direction you're going in, and I would like to see that be the agenda. But from what I'm understanding, as Councilmember Sims mentioned earlier, somebody just towed from a church, even though there's only two cars in that lot, whatever, the problem is, we have a state-regulated contract with, now, obviously, that's not my church, I don't charge $230, but if we have a state-regulated contract that already gives us the consent to go in and police that property as the property owner sees fit. So a trespasser is a trespasser. If that's on the list that says they want you towed there because you're parked there after hours, or they want you towed there because you're double parked, some places tow if you take up two parking spaces. You know what I mean? It's just whatever their agenda is and whatever their requirements are, that's what we follow. So when you call it predatory towing, to tow somebody because there's only two lots, or two cars and maybe a 30-person parking space or something, I don't know, but that's not predatory towing. Predatory towing is like, for example, interstate towing in Indianapolis, one of the major reasons they passed an ordinance in Indianapolis, Colts games, obviously, huge, huge traffic comes through that town. There's several abandoned lots in such an industrial city. I don't think you can find an abandoned lot in Bloomington anymore. So this isn't even really a great example for here. But the point is, they found abandoned lots, they went up there, cars parked there for the Colts game or something like that, they show up a signage, zip, 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 right into those poles, and then they tow hundreds of cars immediately the same day. Everybody comes back and they're like, well, there weren't signs here earlier. Well, now they got to prove it. But the point is, by state law, that's protected already as well, because the signage has to be posted for 24 hours before you can even conduct business for that private lot towing. That is an example of what predatory towing is. And in Bloomington, we don't have that. I mean, we just don't. And I just want to make sure you guys understand what a predatory practice is, because I actually take it very, very, very offensive that we get grouped into that, and the fact that the paper's calling this a predatory towing ordinance, because it's not what this is.
Okay. If Councilmember Sims would like to address that?
I will say, I'm not happy that some of the companies with the broad language takes it personally as if we're talking to individual companies. No one here has accused anyone of anything that I'm hearing. This is an ordinance, and it is to control and protect our most vulnerable citizens against what has been, over time, predatory towing practices. So we can debate that all day long, but the fact of the matter is that that is part of what this ordinance... what this ordinance was intended by the previous counselors, Andy Ruff and Dorothy Granger, and they weren't re-elected. This been talked about even in last year. And I agree to carry this forward because I believe in what it stands for in protecting the most vulnerable in our community. As someone said earlier, every company is different.
Yeah, and I definitely-
I'm not done, please.
Okay, go ahead.
Every company's different. We have so many different people in this town and different income levels, and one set of what you consider fair, I don't consider it fair for everybody involved. This is a town of haves and have-nots. This don't have anything to do with you all as companies, but what we're trying to do is make it fair so that when you make tolls, then you, you know, you can make a living. We're not trying to stifle commerce. There is the issue of due process. Lot of what we're doing here was modeled, and we researched the Indianapolis ordinance and what they do. Now, not everything because it's different, but in particularly from the legalities, that's one of the things that we've checked into. So we think, or me as the sponsor thinks, I should say, that this is fair. I just heard someone else say they did 42 tolls.
Forty-two what?
Tolls is what I heard. If it's $100 a tow, that's $4,200. He said, "I did 42 in one day." Now, I don't really, you can do however many and make as much money as you can, as long as it's equitable across the board, and that's all we're saying. There's been some things said I don't want, I'm not even going to. I mean, I've heard some things about the administration and some other things. That's not what this is about, you know. So and I'm just addressing, this is about fair and equitable, and I will go so far as to say social justice and social equity. Some people in this town, we just can't, they cannot afford to do that. They're paycheck to paycheck. That's why there are certain provisions within the ordinance that they can get their vehicles, and there is still a mechanism that you all can be compensated. We're not trying to get away from that. I mean, what's fair is fair. So, you know, that's kind of what we're looking at. But there was a time in my life if my vehicle got towed, and I'm not challenging that because if I park illegally, I probably deserve to be towed. But if I go to pick up my vehicle and I can't get my vehicle because I can't afford it, now I can't go to work, now I can't earn money, now I can't pay you to get my car back, I might lose my job. I know that's an outside scenario, but it is one of the true things that happens in this town. And those are the type of things that we're trying to avoid and let you still run a good business and make a decent living. You know, when I use a tow truck, it's AAA company. I call AAA and they send probably one of you guys' company. I don't know what they get paid. I don't know all that stuff. I just know that I pay them fee as my agent and that contract with someone else that come take care of our needs. So-
Okay.
That's kind of all I want to say about that. So Chair, thank you.
I'd like to make a couple more comments, and then I'm actually, I'll let other companies and people answer questions. I'm getting quite frustrated, to be honest. But can you not lose your job for not paying any other bill in your life? If I don't pay my water bill, I don't get water. If I don't get electric, if I don't pay my electric bill, I don't get to have lights on. If I don't have gas to get to work, I can't go to a gas station and say, "Hey, man, I got 20%. Is there anyone who can finance the rest of that for next month and a half?" It just doesn't make sense. Secondly, as far as the complaints, right? This is all funded on, or, well, founded, sorry, on complaint department. You said that's how it was built, and I can certainly agree that that's probably how this all started. I can specifically show that when BPD was interfering with towing in the first place, doing these no-pay agreements, whether that be a police tow or a private lot tow, that we're really not that far apart. I don't see a difference. But when they interfered before, we had a lot of complaints. I would get negative reviews. I would have people show up at my lot telling me that the police department dispatcher themselves told me that I don't have to pay you, that I can do this, I can get out of it. It's very clear that this is an issue that was caused by the city. Now that they're not involved in it, at least for the last three months, they've actually not been involved, as far as I can tell, even though they stated that they were out of it before that, well before that last meeting, the captain said. That's false. Since they've not been involved in the last three months, I've had three people that were unable to pay. I set up payment plans with them anyway, even though the law doesn't require me to. That's three people that are actually truly unable to pay. I can't tell you how many people show up claiming that they're unable to pay, and then they open their wallet and have $1,300 in it. So, I mean, it's giving an avenue and a way out. And as far as not being able to afford one thing, even if it's a tow, there's many things people can't afford. If you can't afford to pay the tow fee, don't come downtown and park illegally. That's, I mean, that's just way, I've been towed four times myself in this town, from the time I was 18 till just recently. I had my own service car in a permit parked lot with my name and phone number on the side of it, changing a flat tire. A tow company came in, saw I didn't have a permit, towed my car. By all rights, they were allowed to do that. Did I go up and tell them I could do a no-pay just because I know that I could? No. I paid the $240 because they're doing their job. And I didn't agree with it, but that doesn't matter. They didn't do anything wrong. I, actually, they brought me my car back, but the point is, I still paid it. So I just don't feel like it's fair. I don't understand the agenda there, and I really feel like, I mean, I'd really just like to stop. I appreciate it, guys.
Councilmember Volan.
Yeah, I think this has been a very edifying debate even now, and I want to say a couple things that might clarify. First of all, the ordinance is not called predatory towing, even though, have a seat, I don't want to make you stand. It's not called predatory towing. It's called non-consensual tow license. Okay, so that's specifically what it's about. And Mr. Sims is shaking, is nodding his head to confirm that. People have been characterizing it as predatory towing because the average person who gets towed thinks that towing is kind of unfair in general. They don't, nobody likes being towed. We also have this impression that towing costs 80 bucks, 100 bucks, 120 bucks. You know, we've heard it's gone up, but nobody really knows or thinks about it until they get towed, and they're shocked when the bill comes and it's 240. Okay. One of the things that this ordinance is doing is at least saying there is a cap on what's fair. And it may seem expensive to you all, but it's, you know, it's preventing, it's preventing the true predatory towing. It's preventing the $800 charge or the towing out of state or anything else that makes the legitimate towing companies, gives them a bad name. The second thing it does, it's been doing, and I certainly am learning a lot from tonight, is it's teaching everyone how much towing costs. And to that end, one of the things I'm thinking about as a result of this conversation is, can we include a clause that somehow promotes the total cost of towing? That, you know, that there's a certain cap above which, I mean, you may pay as much as $240 or whatever the amount is, you know, and so let that be part of the warning sign, because no one's ever really sure. And if there was some city-wide sort of cap, like we separate the daily charge, okay, but the other stuff, if, you know, like the first day towing may cost up to $240, at least no one will be surprised by it. It's why you post signs, right? To say, "Look, we posted a sign. You're not allowed to park here. If you do, it's going to cost you this much." So, but the point is that, you know, people are getting sensitive about it. I think, I mean, when we talked about this three weeks ago, everyone in the room, tow companies and others, thought that a better regulation was needed. And that regulation's in front of us, okay, and it's not perfect. I think that the change now, the specific change here, that was something that Councilmember Flaherty would have supported, and that Councilmember Sims had no objection to, removed the thing that said that any violation would make you subject to denial. And now it says, "The administrator can decline to issue or renew a license if the applicant has previously violated any provision of this chapter and has been subject to any of the penalties listed." In other words, only if you've paid a penalty are you eligible for denial. That's different than if you've had a warning, that that's enough to deny you. So that's a little bit better. Maybe we need to make it to such things. So that's something you guys have to get back to us on. Maybe we can't decide that tonight. But that's all that this change of this amendment does. And the only thing that this ordinance is doing, at least in my mind, is trying to set a cap, a framework, like it can't get any worse than this, and that everybody knows what the deal is. So that's the premise under which I'm proceeding, and I, you know, hope that that's something that's understood by people. I'd like some feedback on it.
We have someone to make a comment?
It isn't directly related to what you just spoke.
Your name, your name.
Joan Padawan. I'm a citizen.
Okay.
I think on this specific amendment, there aren't enough guidelines. What kind of timeframe is involved? When is this license pulled? Is it immediately? How long before you can see an appeal person? What happens to your business in the meantime? Is it six weeks until you can get in front of an appeals board? Meanwhile, you're out of, your business is shut down? All your employers are screwed? What, it doesn't seem like there's enough language there, enough structure to the penalties, because that's, seems like it would be a really significant point to include.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Where are we with council questions?
You go to the mic.
Most of the reason we've been pushing for these discussions is the information you have is limited, and in response to Councilman Sims, everything he's doing is definitely necessary and understandable. I will address this later in the proper time, but if I can show you that there is people out to get us, and it is police, it is the legal department, would that change your mind? Just keep that in mind, and I will address that at the proper discussion time. This is why we are so adamant, because there, it is happening, it has happened, and there's been discrimination and vendettas against us by police officers. I will address that during our open discussion time.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Councilmember Rallo.
I think Mr. Rooker had a response that he wanted to give, so perhaps so-
I do. Thank you very much, Councilmember Rallo. First off, I just want to point out, to the extent that there's some confusion perhaps in the industry, this is not a piece of legislation that was brought forward by the administration, it's been brought forward by the council. So to the extent that you think that somehow the legal department crafted this and is trying to force it on you, I promise you that's not what happened here at all. But-
Sir-
The other thing I would like to say just is that this is hardly the first licensing regime that this body has placed into the city code, and these provisions don't deviate from the other licensing regimes in the code in any significant way, particularly if we're going to talk about Amendment 2, when we're talking about a non-renewal or a revocation of a food truck license, or a scooter license, or a taxicab license, or a solicitor license, or a pawnbroker license. And if you were to go to Terre Haute, or Columbus, or South Bend, or Indianapolis, you'd find that their license provisions look the same way as well. So to the extent that there are concerns that this is somehow very different or significantly varies from what happens in other communities, those just aren't founded.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo.
Well, let me pose this to Mr. Rooker, Mr. Lucas. Just a clarification regarding the decline to issue or renew license. The procedure would be, I assume, notification of the tow company, and then a certain time period that it would allow an appeal process. Is that correct? Wouldn't be, you're, you know, we're not going to renew your license and, you know, your jeopardy of, right, of your business then being, you get my drift. What time period do we have built in to this process for appeal and so forth?
So we're very familiar with sending notices of violation in our department for violations of the city code. So what would happen is we would send a written notice of violation. We would stay enforcement while the 10-day period to file an appeal is pending. So you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be done. And if you wanted to appeal that decision, you would go ahead and appeal it to the Board of Public Works. Your business would continue to operate while you were preparing for that appeal. If the appeal got continued or couldn't happen for some reason, say for four weeks, your license wouldn't be revoked in the interim. So this is, again, we do this all the time. We send lots of notices of violations. It's very typical.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. Councilmember Volan.
Yeah, I did want to reiterate that this ordinance was initiated by Councilmembers Ruff and Granger. It was sponsored by them. They wrote it, and it's being carried out by Councilmember Sims, since those two are no longer on council. And I forgot to mention that this was not initiated by the administration. This was council's idea. I did want to hear from Mr. Padawan because he had some comments too. I gather that you also have a reaction to this. But I just, there was a question about, she asked a question about what is the period of time that, you know, after which a violation is no longer considered? Is it any violation ever, or just in a given year, or what is it?
That's a good question. I believe, as written, the license administrator has discretion, and certainly the length of time since the last violation or since the last warning would play into what remedy they chose to pursue at that time. I'll let Mr. Rooker add on anything, but if there-
I guess I'd ask Mr. Rooker, would you object to there being some period of time, like in the past X months or years, to be added to qualify it so that it's not sort of forever?
I would express a preference, is the way I would say it, that when the Board of Public Works or a reviewing court were to consider an appeal following a decision of the license administrator, that that body not be bound by some sort of provision that says, "If a year has passed, you can't consider it." I would like the Board of Public Works or the Circuit Court to be able to consider, you know, the entire history of a particular organization when deciding on an appeal. So I wouldn't want to put any sort of limitation like that.
Even if it was three or five years?
Yeah, and I think that that would be really an important fact, right? If you'd been a good actor for four and a half years, I think that would obviously be a really important fact for the Board of Public Works or for a judge to consider in reviewing the decision of the license administrator.
So you're saying that even if a violation was more than five years old, you wouldn't want to expire that?
I would want the reviewing body to have the full factual circumstances available for it to consider.
Thank you. I yield to public comment. I'd like to hear from either Padawan.
Yes.
One follow-up comment. Thank you for clarifying with that there are timeframes in place. But while that's common knowledge to you and perhaps to the council, that's not common knowledge to Joe Public. So that's why it's important to understand that.
Thanks. Thank you. In terms of the process here, and we are spending a lot of time on this amendment, are we to a point where we can have final comments from council, or do we need any further clarification? Ready to make final comments?
Just where are we? Do, are there more questions that council needs to ask or clarification? Are we ready to make a final comment on Amendment 2 as amended?
And just to clarify, I don't know that it was considered a friendly amendment. I don't know if the council wants to consider it as a friendly amendment or take a separate vote on the amendment to the amendment.
Well, you know, I appreciate the intent here. I do think we need to have a provision for denial of non-renewal. I think that it would actually benefit towing companies too to know that a bad, a truly bad actor could in fact be, you know, denied a license. I do wonder whether this couldn't use a little more cooking. Certainly, that change was important, but we're, we've been debating it for a while and we're already getting late. I kind of, this is the kind of thing I wish we had two more weeks to work on.
We do have the friendly amendment on the table, and I think what we're hearing, do we want to vote on that at least first before we-
Because I think there might be more changes to this amendment. I don't know that they're going to be dramatic, but if we have more changes, this is still committee of the whole. We can bring it up at regular session, you know. I mean, we've debated it plenty. If the companies that are affected by this don't understand it and/or have- If, if, if the companies that are affected by this don't understand it, and/or have concerns about language changes, you know, like this, this was complicated, it was clear that they didn't understand our process any more than we understood theirs. And that this is non-trivial language. I'd like a little bit more time to shop it.
All right. Any other counsel comments? Counselor Member Rallo.
Well, first, a clarification. Mr. Sherman, is it appropriate that if the sponsor, Councilmember Sims, accepts this as a friendly amendment, that we don't need to amend the amendment?
That's not...
What's the proper...
If no one objects to it, you can move forward as amended. If someone can say, I want to have that as a separate vote, then you have a separate vote.
Okay. And then my second comment is, since this is a Committee of the Whole, we could provisionally adopt the amendment as amended. And then we could change it at our regular session if needed. But it at least gives us an ability to move it forward and judge the temperature of the amendment.
Either way.
Counselor Member Sims, do you have an opinion on the friendly amendment?
I thought it was offered as a friendly amendment, and that's how I accepted it.
I thought that as well.
I ask unanimous consent to accept the friendly amendment.
When we got the written copy of the strikeout, that that was what we were debating.
In the past, we've had to vote on it, even under friendly amendment. Mr. Sherman, you made me vote on friendly amendments before. In the past, you've had to vote on it. So, but I, again, I ask unanimous consent to accept the friendly amendment. I need a second.
Second.
All right. All in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed?
There you go.
Okay. Now, we have something on the table to either move, do pass on, and maybe work on a little bit more. It's up to you. Final statements from anybody?
Recommend do pass?
Second.
It's been recommended. I will start with my left.
Abstain.
So that's a pass?
I'm passing on it, yes. I'm abstaining.
Yes, no, or pass?
Well, it's recommend do pass, so that's confusing. I'm abstaining.
I was looking at run.
Okay.
And pass means that we're moving it forward.
No. Yes means you're moving it forward. Pass means you're abstaining.
Yes.
You've changed your vote to yes. Okay.
Yes.
I will pass?
Yes.
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 I'm sorry, Counselor Member Rallo?
Yes.
It's 5-0-2.
Okay. All right. That is 5-2 for approval. We want, yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to ask the sponsor if he wouldn't mind skipping Amendment Three for the sake of time, since it's Scrivener's matter. Will you take it up at council without committee consideration?
Actually, it is housekeeping. And I think, I think it's very non-controversial, is the word you like to say. So what was your question?
I just, if he would not introduce it, so that we could go to Amendment Four. We can talk, we can take it up at regular session.
This should go by quickly if we just...
Yes. I mean, I'd like to do it in order, if that's your question.
Okay.
Move do pass Amendment Three?
Second.
All right. So move to seconded. And let's move it forward.
Thank you. The synopsis of this one is, this amendment is sponsored by myself, and changes a reference to the entity issuing licenses under the new chapter 4.32. And like I said earlier, this was just housekeeping. And ordinance number three of, I'm sorry, Amendment Number Three of Ordinance 20-03 reads as follows. The proposed amendment, Ordinance 20-03, Section One, shall be amended by amending 4.32.160 subset B3 by changing the words "controller's office" to the word "city," so that 4.32.160B3 would read as follows. Any fact or condition exists which, if it had existed at the time of the original application for such license, would have permitted the city to refuse originally to issue such license.
Okay. Questions regarding this particular amendment from councils? Any comment from the public? No comment from the public that I'm seeing. Back to counsel for any final statement?
Recommend do pass.
Second.
Recommend do pass, starting with my right.
Yes.
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 All right. And that is seven in favor.
Madam Chair, I move Amendment Four.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Please present.
All right. So this is the point where the question about the administrative fee is relevant. Amendment Four proposes adding a phrase, "For administrative expenses, the maximum fee shall be $25." Now, I didn't write this. I simply introduced it so we can discuss it. What I've heard from the towing companies tonight is that $25 is underestimating the total cost of fees that are not the actual tow, special equipment, or daily storage. And that IU pays a base of $40 rather than 25. But it's at this point that I want to hear from tow companies about what they see in an administrative fee, what they think that fee should be. And so I'd like to ask whoever wants to, who's a tow company, to speak to this. Can I get somebody to speak to it?
All right. So instead of going to counsel questions first, would anyone like to speak to this rate? The $25 versus the 40?
Again, my name is Jacob Padawan with Tow Time. I tried to send this as part of something before we even started, but it's much longer. I, maybe I can email it later, but I'm going to read just what I feel like is important. The admin fee for every other contract was determined based on what the cost for that type of service provided was. This service is much different. And I want to clarify, again, I'm comparing to IU, because that was one of the, one of the ones we're trying to sync up with. So here, these prices were determined with IU hiring the people that patrol these lots. IU staff find the trespassing unauthorized cars. IU staff writes the tickets and determines what cars get towed. IU pays for all of the training of those employed. IU determines, sorry. IU pays for installs and maintains all signage for their private property. IU pays for assigns maintains record of and handles violations on all the passes for the authorized cars. And they assume all liability to authorize towing of any unauthorized trespassing cars based on the Indiana State IC Code. So IU also has the right to ticket these cars in addition to having them towed. These tickets range from $20 to $200, depending on the violation. And I think it's fair to assume the average fine is roughly $60. I think it's safe to assume as well that the average fee would be enough to cover the cost of policing those lots that IU has. Not including the, you know, 2020 IU parking ops contract that I also, there's, I think, I believe there's like four of us in this room that are on that contract. Not including that contract. On normal private property businesses, we actually assume those fees. Apartment, the general practice is an apartment complex is not billed for private lot towing. It's never, it's not that way. It's always billed at the owner's risk and expense. The signs read that way. Every single sign says unauthorized and unwanted cars will be removed at the vehicle owner's risk and expense. They're very fair warnings. So, you know, to understand those fees, and that you're subject to pay those, is really an educational thing, not something that should be limited. But I just want to be clear that my company, the way that we do it, we've got to hire and train all these drivers. There's drug tests involved. There's background checks. There's rigorous things that we have to do to make sure drivers can pass on our insurance and everything. There's just a lot of criteria that makes it really hard to even find somebody to drive a tow truck. We pay for all the passes, and the signage, and installation of all signage on the properties that we tow for. We want to make sure it's in accordance with the Indiana state law. Almost all signs and passes that we provide are reflective and top quality. Non-consensual companies must also carry a separate insurance policy, different than the normal on-hook type of insurance that only covers consensual roadside service-type towing. We also must do all the policing of these properties. And I'd like to give you guys examples. The driver, driver must drive around to each property, get out and walk an entire complex to check every single car for passes. That driver must also check an ever-changing no-tow list, as I said earlier, to confirm that there isn't any maintenance truck, cleaner van, painter, delivery truck, lawn care truck, or any other marked or unmarked contractors that have permission to park, but still may not have that permit or temporary pass to be on the property. This driver must check all the specific permissions that we have in each contract to know what cars are eligible to tow on each specific property. Every single contract is different. We must provide the best service we can, so most times the driver is coming up empty-handed. We go around and patrol, may not find cars. Other times, there could be three to five violators on any given property. These trucks are staffed and running day in and day out. The fuel and labor that is exerted through a private lot towing service is very high. We have office staff to release these cars as fast as possible and keep all this info updated consistently. We must also provide night shift staff to meet the 24-hour release requirements by Indiana state law that they regulate already. I believe that a non-consensual private property tow fee should be at least $40 higher than the IU fees, because of the additional burden that we have with the policing of lots, as I said before.
So name that number. What is the actual number? At least $40 higher than what?
At least $40 higher, yeah. And that's...
Then what?
That's actually $20 conservative, based on how I came up with that. Because, like I said, an average ticket for IU would be 60 bucks. So I think it's fair that that's what their costs are. We're providing two services, so...
When, when the city changed its parking fine in 2018, it went from 20 to 30. We, it took a long time for us to figure out that we were not actually getting our costs out of the old fine, and that the new cost barely did it. So how sure are you that $60 is their actual, or maybe they're overestimating, maybe they're underestimating?
I might be overestimating, I might be underestimating. This is to the best of my knowledge and my own research in the last three to five days.
Okay. But what I'm hearing is roughly, you think an administrative fee of $100 is fair. Am I characterizing...
I'm sorry, say that last part again.
$100 that you, you think that 60, if the IU average is 60, and you think it's at least $40 below what it should be, you're saying that you think an admin fee of $100 is what's fair? Is that correct?
No. I believe that $60 would be their average cost. I believe that because we're doing both, they can, I mean, I think that 40 is actually fair. I want to increase the $25 admin fee that they've already decided is fair for IU, Monroe County, BPD, all that's for our overhead. Our additional overhead should be 40, at least. And what that means is I want to change the administrative fee to $65.
Okay. So $40 over the 25 that we proposed, got it?
Right.
That's what I mean.
So that it would be the 135 tow, the dolly charge, the storage charge, but the admin fee be allowed to be $65.
All right. That, that gives me clarity. I appreciate it.
Am I understanding correctly that the vast majority of the reason for that above and beyond $40 has to do with policing of lots? Is that right?
Yes.
Can I ask a related question? Mr. Lockley stated earlier that he, they have a different mechanism for policing their own lots. And then Mr. Volan, Councilmember Volan, also brought up the possibility that if your admin fee is capped at $25, and you can't recoup costs, and no other towing company can recoup costs, there's going to be no one to serve private lot owners unless those private lot owners are willing to pay you an additional, you know, dollar per week or dollar per day amount to police lots for them. In other words, it's going to separate from the way you charge fees now. It will have a cap from the ordinance. You're going to need to make additional money if you're going to be policing lots, and they will pay separately for that policing service, rather than building into the admin fee, is sort of what this structure gets at, if I'm...
Yes.
Understand that right? So do you have an aversion or a problem to that, or a problem with that approach, that it'd be a change in how you structure your fees, perhaps? But charging, you could charge property lot owners for policing services separately from the towing fees that you charge. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Would that be okay?
I do believe, based on all the contracts that I do have, my business model personally, I know that some tow companies have a very flat business model, period. This is how much their tow fee is, this is how much this is, this is the service they provide, it's their way to the highway. I've built my entire business model around my customer. And my customer in this business is the private property owner. And the state law clearly says you need consent from the private property owner, the vehicle owner, or the police. So when you have this contract, that consent is from the private property owner. And I don't believe that they would agree with paying for these services because of what that would cost. And I don't, I guess, let me give you a good example. Each property is different. Some properties, I've only towed three cars off of in a year and a half. Some properties, we can tow five a day, six a day. You know what I mean? So it, the need is definitely different. And if we were to channel it that way, some properties could have that service performed for a cheaper amount, and some would have, we'd have to charge them hundreds and hundreds of dollars a month just to perform that service.
Are there, are there properties that you currently serve that do not require you to police, that just call you when they have a need?
Yes.
And you charge less in those instances?
Yeah. My personal business model as well has three different price points that the property owner gets to choose from. It's a starting point for that tow. Everything else is the same fees, those dollies and storage. I don't really have an admin fee right now, but I'm, I'm okay with restructuring something like that, as far as private lot goes. But yes, there are several properties that have what's called manager's request, which means the manager or property owner, or something like that, would have to call on a car. That's exactly what this gentleman said, their practices on their property. But there's also several, mostly apartment complexes, like major ones, for example, Varsity Apartments, or Omega Apartments, or Jamar Properties. Some of those still have a management request, but a lot of them want 24-hour patrol over all the parking lots. And the reason why is because their parking ratio is not good. There's, there is absolutely zero visitors parking on any Omega property, period. Also CS properties, zero visitor parking on any property that they own. So they have to have us patrolling 24/7, literally, through those properties to make sure that people have the spaces that they're provided. There's a couple other properties that we tow for that have assigned parking, whereas, where a tenant would pay for a specific space. Some of them pay upwards of $175 a month. Some are structured as $1,500 a semester. So that person is going to want their space available, and they have it set up on those occasions. A lot of those are set up to where the actual person who owns that spot has to call. So it's not necessarily a management thing. The person that can prove that they rent that space, and we have that on record, can call and have the car that's in their spot removed.
We've got several people behind it. We're going to add to the initial questions. So if we could kind of keep things moving, and we can certainly get back with a, with more additional questions for you. Thank you.
Cody Chandler with Chandler on Woven Towing. To break down the administration fee to clarify that, IU Parking Operations, IU Monroe County, their administration fee is $25. Monroe County words it as a service fee of $25. As far as my breakdown, the way we, that administration fee, what it covers on my part is, that covers after-hours of vehicle releasing. There's no fees structuring that. The credit card fees, we accept credit cards at my towing location, so those are also taken into consideration. Under the new proposed ordinance for 4.32.150, there is a lot more documentation, record-keeping that is going to go into effect with this, including photos, video documentation that has to be kept up to two years. That has to be taken into account for that fee as well. Also, cars that are left after 72 hours, according to state law, we have to send out a notice to the registered owner of the vehicle, and that is also an extra expense on that. So that administration fee covers multiple things. You know, we feel, I feel like at least it needs to be 25 to start with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Devin King. As one of the previous speakers mentioned, the customers for towing companies are property owners. It's not the people who they're driving the revenue from with specific towing fees. And so I would like to suggest that we carefully consider before allowing the increase of fees not related to the towing of specific people's cars. fees not related to the towing of specific people's cars. Those people can't control the level of policing that towing companies decide to offer, and if a lot owner decides that they would like an increased level of policing, they, maybe they want cameras installed and constant monitor, monitoring, I would suggest that they be responsible for those additional costs above and beyond the cost of the tow itself. And that's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need to hear anything from staff at this point, after we've heard some input? Go ahead, sir.
Max Stryker. I think asking property owners to pay for a service that they shouldn't need, but they do based on the lack of parking in this town, I think is a little ridiculous. I don't think, there's only probably one or two property owners in this room. I'm pretty sure they don't have any interest in paying us to watch their stuff. And then, on what level? Mr. Lockley's properties I'm very familiar with, as were the contracted tow for him, it's management. He pays somebody to sit in an office during the day, and if there's an issue, he pays that person already to go outside, and then that goes to another person, and that person contacts me or whoever's working for me at that time. So, there's quite a bit of a process there that already costs Mr. Lockley money. If I said, "Mr. Lockley, do you want to pay me more money so I can tow off your property?" Would you be in agreeance with that? No, that, because that's ridiculous. Some of your, some of the properties that we deal with are right downtown. There's a few that are watched by video camera. That was at the property owner's expense, that had nothing to do with me. He calls me, I would say nine out of 10 times, whatever car he calls me that is gone when I get there. It takes 11 minutes to get there. So, I have quite a bit of expense in fuel and time, and I have to pay a driver for their fuel and time. Tow drivers are commissioned. The 25 or $35 admin fee, we don't charge that typically. It's built in, just, the numbers are all the same. You can build it however you want. It costs us a substantial amount of money to do these toes. Drivers make reasonable money doing them, but they also have to take much caution as not damage things, otherwise, you know, the profits on all of that could be smushed with one oops. The administrative fee, I think, should, in this case, since they're, you guys are looking for a number, should be 50 bucks, $65, somewhere in there. We have to keep more records. I have to buy cameras now for the back of my trucks, the front of my trucks, side of my trucks, to get video of these vehicles. The driver has to take more time and take photographs. And to be clear, we already do a lot of these because a lot of people that have their vehicles non-consensually towed say, "Well, you damaged my bumper." Well, here's a picture of your car before we ever touched it. And then they're like, "Okay, my fault." So, we have programs that cost us money.
Answer your question, Councilmember Volan.
Yes, sir. We have programs that cost us money. I use a system called Towbook. It's roughly $300 a month. Comes with GPS tracking, uploads photos, you know, from the driver's cell phone, takes video from our trucks, uploads it to a server, you know, it does a lot of stuff for us. It costs us money already. That's a cost that, to protect my drivers, my company, our reputation, that's a cost I'm willing to absorb. 300 bucks a month doesn't really, you know, that's reasonable, I think. To say to a property owner, "Hey, you require more parking policing because of where your property is located, and the city has nothing to offer for you as far as a remedy for that," that's not fair to property owners. That's not fair to people that live at those properties.
I do have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
So, you just gave Mr. Lockley as an example. He said that he pays people to monitor their lots. So, literally, he is paying somebody to do the monitoring. He does it in-house.
I'm not sure how exactly his
Well, no, 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 but the point is that, that you're saying that there are property owners who don't want to pay for monitoring, and you don't want to have to be the ones to be forced to, to charge them for it. But why should the driver, I mean, I, I don't see what's wrong with, you know, we're certainly not preventing you from charging a monitoring fee, but I mean, what does a property owner expect if they're in a place where a lot is being abused by people who shouldn't be parking there? Why should they expect to get your service, your monitoring service, for free?
So, I think this comes down to responsibility of the, what I feel like, in your case, would be the victim of, of this entire deal here.
Yeah, sure.
The, we have signs
Did you post them?
Yes, ma'am. We have signs posted at properties indicating, you know, what you can and can't do, if you can't park there. And as an adult, if I go into a property and I see no parking, unauthorized parking, permit parking, or something to that nature, chances are I'm not going to park there. I'm going to find street parking, pay parking, or inquire about said permit.
No, I get what you're saying, but the thing is, like, what we're here talking about tonight is trying to find a fair rate so that no one will ever accuse you guys of being predatory again, because here's a fair rate that the city is adjudicating. Now, that rate, the debate we're having is about monitoring, the value of monitoring, and you guys have been having to build monitoring into your price. And, you know, like, we've heard your complaints about how you're, you're squeezed on so many different sides, but this seems to be the one thing, like, I get signage, training, insurance, office staff 24/7, credit cards, documentation, notice. Got all those things down. These are all costs you guys incur. I get those, and I totally support an admin fee that covers those. But the monitoring is different.
Right. I'm not advocating that we cover our monitoring costs. I'm also not advocating that we ask the property managers to do so, or the property owners to do so. I think that with all of this additional paperwork, again, I spent an hour on the phone this morning, that's an hour of my time. My time is worth money.
Right. But I mean, you guys should, I mean, somebody, somebody who, whoever does monitoring should be paid for it, whether it's the employees of the property owner or a contractor like you guys.
Right. I, see, I, I believe that the monitoring should be built into our fees and paid for by the perpetrator, if you so will. Yes, sir.
Well, there's, well, I can say one last thing. As a resident of Town Manor, the most difficult place to tow out of in the entire city, right behind the Bluebird, okay, we could never get a tow company to come and tow us. I don't remember who we contracted with, but whenever I needed somebody
You didn't get such bad
It's years ago. Yeah, no, I'm sure, I'm sure it's done better now, but years ago, I could not get anyone to come. It was the hardest tow to do. Nobody wanted to do it.
I understand.
So, you know, we would have paid a fee just to get somebody to do it, but we didn't think that was even possible.
Right, that's one property that has specific issues. There's thousands of properties in Bloomington.
Sure, well, you're making my point.
Councilmember Flaherty has
Trying to explore the same, the same point, and really pick this apart. You, do you also, Mr. Padua, is that right? But do you also, Mr. Stryker, do you charge different fees for property owners depending on whether or not they call in the, the issue to you, or whether you have to monitor the site?
No, my fees, which, if any of you would like to take a look at my fees, I did only print out one copy, unfortunately, whether we're contracted to patrol a particular lot, or if it's a call-in only by a manager, our fees are generally the same.
Really?
Personally, and, and other businesses may model differently, consistency is what, is what I'm after, which it sounds like this bill is about consistency. So, you're trying to match everything through and through, but you're also placing a lot more on us as towing companies, you know, and we have to offset that cost somehow. Where, where do we get it? We can't build it into the tow fee. That doesn't make sense, so we have to build it into an admin fee. Yes?
Councilmember Scambolory.
And this isn't necessarily directed to you, Mr. Stryker, so whoever can help me with this, but it's been a while since I've been a renter, so help me find the flaw in my thinking here.
Okay.
Okay.
No problem.
When I, if I think of myself as a renter in an apartment, I think of parking as an amenity. That's something I get to do because I pay my rent and I can live there.
Right.
Right. A swimming pool is an amenity, and the apartment complex or, or the, the property owner has an obligation to maintain that amenity. They have an obligation to make sure the elevators work in a building. They have the, an obligation to ensure that all the appliances they provide for residents works. Okay? I guess what I'm having trouble understanding is why is parking different? Why, why should they?
Oh, if Mr. Lockley could step in on this.
So, as, Mark Lockley, as a property owner, you're having someone who's trespassing on your property. So, to, that, that pool that you're using is an amenity, and it's for amenity for my residents, who are paying for that amenity, as opposed to someone who just trespasses on your property, parks a car, and leaves. That's, for us, that's, that, that's the difference. And, and so, to clarify our process
May I nudge you on that just a little bit?
Yeah, of course, go ahead.
Before you go away from that. Why is that not just a reasonable expectation of doing business? If you have a desirable residential property downtown, you know people are going to park and trespass, why is that not an expected cost of doing business?
Well, because the person's essentially is, is, it's a violation onto you as opposed to someone who's paying money for that amenity.
I agree that it's wrong. I agree they shouldn't be parking there.
And again, you know, if, if there was plenty of parking, this wouldn't be, this wouldn't be an issue. I just had a, a project approved in December where the main, the main argument to the, to the approval was, was parking. As, 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 as Councilman Volan is laughing, I mean, it is a real issue, and so, we are, we are underparked. I have more cars than I can handle on an everyday basis. And so, every parking spot is, is, is paid for by the resident, and it's, and, and they need it, you know, especially my market is, I am a non-undergraduate developer, essentially. So, I have professionals and, and, and professors and retirees, grad students, and so, that, that car is their access to work, it's to, to shopping and all these things. So, for them, it's essential that they have it. And so, for, for me, you know, I, I go into the expense of, I don't monitor my parking actively. It's not eight to five when my office is open. You know, the staff is, goes through, goes through parking, but after-hours, a resident would call into the, whoever's on call, and they then determine if that car needs to be towed, and then they call the towing service. So, I'm paying already time and a half for my after-hours person, who is an employee of mine, to take the call, go through the list, determine who's, they're sometimes actually go out on-site if there's a question on if it is a residence, if it is a residence's car, and then make the call to have it, to have it towed. So, there's
So, in that case, the resident is doing the patrolling, so to speak?
Well
Who calls your after-hours person?
After-hours, it is, it is, it's complaint-based.
All right, so the resident is, or residents
Right, but, but if you go through any of my developments, I have, there, every space is, is parked at night, unless they're
Sure, and just to be clear, I'm not suggesting that people shouldn't have cars
Oh, right.
Or that, or that
Totally understand.
People who trespass and park illegally are, are just fine. No, I'm not suggesting any of that. What I'm trying to get at is who pays
And so, for us
To actually provide a parking lot that provides parking for your resident.
And so, for us, it, it doesn't make any sense to us to incur a cost for someone that is not, is trespassing and is not supposed to be there. If I were the city, I'd be able, as an example, I'd be able to, I'd be able to tow, I'd be able to ticket. The ticket would stick, you know, I would be, I would be able to get my money for that. I would be able to reap a cost to that violation, and as a property owner, I, I wouldn't. Right.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan.
I have a follow-up question, Mr. Lockley. Why don't you gate your lot?
You know, this isn't LA. I don't think anyone wants to have, and as a, as a, as a developer, I don't want to have gated premises.
But that would, that would, that would reduce your enforcement costs.
Right, and it would also, it would increase, it would increase rent, because I'm having to go through and, and put up gates and mo, and monitoring and the cost of maintenance and the
You're already spending that money on monitor, you're actually spending it on staff. If you had a gate, you could, you would reduce your mounting costs.
Again, for me, I don't, my staff isn't like sitting in front of a TV looking for their, as they're going about their daily business, or as we get a call in the day, they, they, that's the way that they monitor. But I, gates aren't very, aren't very friendly. I mean, it's not very
Do you have gates on your garage at the Park South? You have a garage at Park South, are there gates?
We do have, we do have a gate on, on that one.
As we approach 11 o'clock, may I remind everyone, the amendment on the table has to do with the cost of
Well, that's what we're trying to get to, is who incurs the cost.
And so, and, and my point is, is that you're having someone come onto your property that's trespassing. Why is it fair for me, as the property owner, to pay for that person's car removed?
It's not a matter of fairness, it's that we, I mean, if, if the parking enforcement of the city enforced every violation, they could maybe get to one in 10. If we enforced every violation, there'd be rioting in the street, because it would be like a police state. Okay? We, we enforce as much as we can.
And it's the same for us, as, as Mr. Stryker said, you know, there are a lot of times where we'll have someone come in, they'll park, they want to grab whatever from whatever store.
Sure.
He has the drive out there. We have to spend time to, to, to deal with that, and they're gone already, and it's, that's
But when people ask why we don't have more parking, like Mr. Stryker does, my answer is because it costs money to enforce, to prevent people, like, if you leave it open, you don't gate it, then you get people who are, you know, so, so all I'm saying is it costs money to own a parking lot, because you have to, somebody has to patrol it, somebody.
As a general policy, I, I think, as an, as a developer in this town who's actively developing, who's built 600-plus
Sure.
Units in this town, I, I really don't want to start gating developments. It's, you know, it's just, I, I have something, I have a visceral reaction to see, to driving around this town to see a bunch of gates. It's not LA.
I, I mean, I, I'm sorry, we can't be nice, but the thing is, everybody thinks that they deserve free, convenient parking, and that's why tow companies exist.
But it, it's not free.
That's what I'm saying.
The resident is, it, the resident, at least my residents, aren't paying a monthly fee, but it's certainly built into their rent.
Matt, Adam.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty has a question.
Related to administrative expenses and the appropriate level for that. I, you had mentioned, and I started to ask earlier, that, and I believe you verified that you have a different rate that you charge based on whether it's a call-in versus you doing policing, right? And then, and then you were making the argument earlier that because of your policing costs, the admin fee should be higher. So, my question is, when, when you tow a vehicle from, let's compare the two situations, when you tow a vehicle from a lot where the owner simply calls it in, versus when you tow a vehicle from a lot that you have to actively be policing or monitoring, what happens to the vehicle in those two cases? Is the charge to the vehicle owner identical, or is the charge to the vehicle owner in the second case where you were doing monitoring, higher?
Yeah, typically, the monitored parking is higher. I wanted to quickly touch base on her question.
Sorry, can I, can I follow through on this, though, if that's okay?
Yeah.
So, you, so, as a vehicle owner who is towed by your company, you, you pay less as the vehicle owner to get your car back if you parked in a lot where management is monitoring themselves and calling it in, versus the amount you will pay to get your car back if it was a lot that you were policing? Is that right?
Yes, so, my contract is very structured for a pricing point. There's three different levels. They all vary, $20 stages. So, typically speaking, it's $40 cheaper on a lot where they handle the policing, as, and this gentleman that just walked in the door is one of the ones that does the policing for me.
Got it. So, you, so you are charging, you are charging, you are already charging for the policing service, because you have a three-tiered structure, so you're charging more to include that service?
No. No, 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 no. I don't want you to take it in that aspect at all, because that's not what it is. When I set out those three levels, it is up to the private property owner to choose the price that I am charging. So
Based on the service you provide, though, right? The cheaper price comes with no monitoring.
In theory, but that, that's not always the case. There's much more criteria. There's criteria based on what their issues are, what their people can afford, how fast do they want you to learn your lesson. I mean, there really is, how often do they want us patrolling there? Do they want it hourly where you're only patrolling 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM? Do they want it to be a 24-hour service? You know, there's a lot of negotiation that goes into it.
That's, that's fair that there's more factors besides just monitoring. My point and what I wanted to tease out of that question was that right now, the vehicle owner is getting charged a different amount based on the level of service you provide to the lot owner.
Right, but absolutely none of that has anything to do with an administrative fee currently.
Well, not currently, but you, part of the argument for a higher administrative fee was that you provide monitoring services. So my point is, we're trying to craft an ordinance where as a vehicle owner, you pay the same amount maximum regardless of, of the lot you, you are towed from. Because if you're paying an extra $50, in some cases, it's the vehicle owner then who is paying for the, the monitoring services of extra vigilant owners and not having to pay in the case where it is not, I don't know, I sort of lost the thread there at the end. But essentially, we're building the price of monitoring into what the vehicle owner pays to get the car back as opposed to building it in to the cost of doing business for a property manager. And, and some are already building it themselves. Mr. Lockley already builds that in. So there's kind of this disparity.
Right, there are companies that do the policing for us and they negotiate things with us. And that, like I said again, they get to choose that pricing based on how important it really is for that company to learn, for their trespassers to learn that lesson. Are they trying, like a lot of low-income places, for example, the Arch Apartments is very cheap. They don't think their people can afford a, the top level, so it's the bottom level. Same with the gentleman that's behind me, you know, we're on the bottom level with him. But for like Omega Properties where there's absolutely no visitor parking and they don't want anybody parking there, they want them to learn their lesson the first time, it is the higher one, so it's typically $40 higher. That really, that strategy doesn't have anything to do with the administrative costs of running my company. It was just kind of how I structured my business at the time.
Punitive.
And one thing, I really just want to answer for her, she was asking about, she looks at a parking space as an amenity. And it absolutely is an amenity, but it's her amenity, right? So if you're trespassing on somebody's property, that is not your amenity. You are trespassing, you are breaking the law, you do need to be removed, you do need to be fined and you do need to be towed. So that's how I look at that.
I'm just agreeing with that, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Lockley have another point?
You got it.
With respect to this?
Sorry, Mark Lockley. One other, just quick. As a property owner and as a property manager, I hate towing. It's bad PR for us. I don't want anyone towed in front of a commercial building that we own or a residential building. It's, it's, it's bad, it's a bad taste in everyone's mouth. It, it takes up staff time, they don't like doing it. You know, again, it's, it's bad PR. We want, for people who are coming to buy stuff at, at our business or someone else's business to have a good experience. And when you walk out and your car is gone, even though you know you, you might be parking illegally, it leaves a bad taste. So it's really, we do it reluctantly. But we do do it because it is, you know, when you're blocking an entrance, I mean, you, you understand the arguments, but it's just, it's, it's bad PR for everyone. So I just wanted to make sure that you understood that.
Thank you. Additional comments with respect to the administrative expense?
And for the administrative fee?
I mean, I'm Wayne Chandler, I work with a company called Flexi Park. I could just say like 30 seconds of what we do because it seems relevant, but you know, I enforce, we've got about 100 spots downtown now over the last year. And I do all the enforcement and I use Jake with Tow Time and they've been great. I don't tow very often, very rarely. I use tickets, really a warning. We're talking about a ticket system, can't really enforce it so much, but they're warnings and they work. I go through the lots every day, lunchtime, dinnertime, weekends, when I know it's busy. Our software keeps track of how many violations, so I can see how many violations they've had. So, you know, I might write a little note on the second violation like, hey, we're going to tow you. Plus, we have a lot of signs. So like when you pull into a lot, what I found, because I talk to a lot of people that are parking and stealing parking, they think they can get away with it or they say, oh, well, sorry, I thought this was a free lot. They know it's not free, but they use it as an excuse. So we have a lot of signs to say, you can park here, you just have to pay. So they kind of get the idea with all the signs. There's a sign on each spot. So you pull up and you see the sign says, here's how you pay. And you go online and you pay with your credit card. So it's worked really well. We have two of the biggest lots in town, the Kirkwood Lot next to CBS and then First United Methodist, and they, tons of parkers. So there's a lot more parking available. I mean, it seems like with the parking garage costs, it's like $30,000 a spot, so that's like $3 million saved that you don't have to build parking garages. So if I can help, I'd like to, you know, enforcement, whatever. There's going to be less towing because I write the, the warnings and I don't tow as often. So.
Thank you.
I don't know if that's relevant, but thanks.
We're, we're trying to, to talk about the administrative fee and whether or not there should be an administrative fee added to the towing and how much it should cost.
I mean, I don't charge anything. I, I just do it because I don't get paid from towing, I just get paid when people park. And we, we make money when people park and so does the owner. So we want them to park many, many, many people. I've turned from being violators into paying customers by, you know, some by towing, but most not, so.
But the owner of the lot is paying you to be there, so that's where his monitoring cost is.
No, nobody's, nobody's paying me extra to do that.
No, no, but you're, you're, you're already there. He's got a cost, like, you know, somebody's monitoring the lot.
Well, it's.
He didn't hire the tow company to monitor the lot.
No, I monitored the lot myself.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I do all the, all the enforcement monitoring and then I call Jake whenever I have, I need to tow. So, you know, it's just, instead of being paid to enforce, I'm enforcing, it's like a business, I look at it like a, a business, I'm enforcing to, to get more paid parkers. So that's a different perspective, so.
Okay, we have some additional comments in line here that may shed some light? Yeah?
All right, I'll make this very brief, but I, and once again, my name was Devin King and I've heard a lot of equating towing to sort of policing or security-type service that property owners are, are receiving. And I would just like to remind us that that is a cost borne by property owners already. You know, property owners have to pay for security, for cameras, fencing, these things already. And we don't question the fairness of that because it's seen as a cost of doing business. And that'll be all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Hawkins with Hawkins Towing. I think $25 administrative fee is, I think that's more than fine because you're already looking at, the tow is $135, but every tow is going to be, it's going to come out to $205 because you got your $135, you got $35, you got 35 administrative fee, 25 whatever. It's going to be around $200 a tow. So, $190, $200, but, I mean, I think, you know, $190, $200, that's, I think that's a more than fair pay per tow, when you break it down per tow. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from counsel?
I have one quick one to ask and I can't pronounce your last name, Sue.
Counselor Member Scamblin.
Trying to be respectful. You were asking about the amenity and all that. Also consider why there's an issue. Basically, the city has greatly, greatly eliminated the amount of parking spaces these places have. And this is a quick reference. A wedding chapel that can hold 600 people was approved 80 parking spots. So where did the rest of the people go? That's why it used to be free, it was included with your rent, but as this city grows and we have, and I'm not saying it's wrong to do this, but remember that the changes in the way we run our city and the changes to be eco-friendly have repercussions. So as the city has limited what a developer can put, if he could, many of them would want to put more and then they can include that spot as part of your rent. Unfortunately, the changes have made it where, what's the ratio? Half a parking spot per bedroom? So literally right from that, you automatically have not enough parking spots for actually your tenants. So how can you give it for free when you don't even have enough for what is there? It's a quick explanation of your question.
Thank you. Counselor Member Sims?
Are we the council of comments before we?
Yeah, it's like the time to wrap this up, I think.
Are we council of comments?
Are we ready for comments or are there any more questions from counsel? Okay. Comments?
Well, we're still on, on the administration expenses and you said some three times. So is there something else you want to add on this ordinance that we're talking, or amendment we're talking about now? I'm sorry, this is the chair. I'm sorry. Well, that's not what we're talking about now. That's the full ordinance next week probably. So is it comment time?
Yeah.
What I do want to say is.
Would the council give me two minutes to perhaps provide a staff perspective on Amendment Four?
Oh.
Before we go to council comments? I'm sorry, I know we jumped straight to the tow companies.
Thank you.
You know, and I do want to say, I want to remind everybody, it's not, this is not an administrative-led initiative. So these are really just observations I'm providing. But I do want to point out that the council has spent the better part of an hour talking with the industry about what they should be allowed to, to charge. And I find it to be perhaps the least surprising thing in the world that they've said more. You know, I, I also find tonight, you've already increased the base fee from $125 or suggested that you will increase the base fee from $125 to $135. We know that doling is charged on every tow, we see that. So that's $160 is the base fee already. That's what we've set as the base fee. Now we've heard an administration fee of $20 or $40 or $65, so we're, we're at $180 or we're at 200 or we're at 225 perhaps. And, and, and that's the fee you'd be setting. We should be clear about that. Whatever you set as the max fee, that's the fee that will be charged. That's what we see. Right now, on the public tow side, it's a cap, but that's what's charged in every case. You know, I don't mean to be, not trying to be difficult about this, but I'm not sure what an administrative fee is. You know, we've heard lots of explanations for this. If you want to increase the base fee, just increase the base fee. That would be far more transparent and less opaque. You know, there have been a lot of justifications that have been offered for this administrative fee, but, but it's difficult. You know, those just appear to be the cost of doing business in general. If there's a cost of credit cards, that's a cost of doing business. There's nothing special about this administrative fee. So I think it's just confusing. They haven't explained well what an administrative fee is. I don't understand it. I don't know that you understand it. I don't think the public will understand what an administrative fee is at all. If we want to let them charge 225, then set it at 225. And then we'll subsequently modify Title 15 to increase those fees to 225. But that's what you have to decide tonight, where you want to set the fees or, or maybe on March 4th more accurately. But, you know, the, here's what I can say. There's no reliable data here. So we can listen to companies say they can justify 225, but there's no reliable data to be had. I know this though, we contract with four companies right now, Hawkins, Ricks, Kens and Auto Mobile. And those companies are permitted to charge $125 base fee, a $25 doling fee and $25 per day storage costs. And that's it. That's the full amount they're allowed to charge and they're doing fine. They're not having trouble. So while there's no reliable data to be had, I will say that, that I, I am suspicious of the notion that 225 is a necessary fee to stay in business.
Thank you. Counselor Member Volin?
If Mr. Sims wants to go first, I'm fine with that.
Do you want to respond to that?
Actually, I do. And it's kind of ironic, if I could use that word, that everything that I was about to say is he kind of said it right before me. Two things I do want to say, three things. First of all, we've been talking a lot about the cost of doing business. Your cost as business owners to do the business. I've heard things like, I have to pay for signage. In our ordinance, that is the owner's responsibility, whoever owns that lot. So if you choose to do that, I mean, I'm okay with it, but that's not an administrative fee for us or for this ordinance. That, that's not the way I see it. Okay? I've also heard earlier tonight, every company is different. So if I got 20 companies, so I got 20 different administrative costs, I got 20 different ways you do business, 20 people that might do doling, 20 that don't, we're trying to look for an even consistent method. Some of you here tonight have said, that's fine with me. Others say, I can't live like that. You see, we're trying to find an equal balance here. Okay? Now, here's the main point I really want to make. Earlier tonight, someone said, I do 42 tow's one night. Now, based on $125 tow fee, $25 dollar fee, $25 administrative fee, that is $180 actually, I got $130 on the tow instead of $125. It's $180, 42 tow's is $7,560. You can use my calculator. If you only did 20 tow's at that cost, it is $3,600. I don't begrudge anyone to, to make money or anything at all. I mean, that's fine. But what I'm saying is, if you tow that it up, it's $180. The base fee is $125 and we're willing to go to $135. I mean, it seems like you want us to go to say, 250 bucks a tow and let's go home. That is against what this ordinance is for, the original sponsors, what I'm bringing for, the people in this county that, in this town that simply can't afford some of these. I understand the educational part, I, I get all of that. I also understand the cost of business. Okay, so I think we got another comment and then I think it's time to.
Doug Blunden, I'm with Stryker Towing.
Wait, hang on.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's your turn or is it him? Steve?
If you're here to the podium, please state your name and.
Doug Blunden, I'm with Stryker Towing. And I just wanted to shed light on what he was.
What? Closer.
Sorry, I just wanted to shed light on to what you were speaking on, on what we make for toes. I'm a driver, so I make 33% of what, you know, the owner gets for the toes, which some toes are $65, most of our toes are 65, $55 of those 42 toes you're bringing up. So you might want to redo that math and take out 33% of that and, yeah. Because that'd be more accurate statement.
Okay. Thank you for that point.
Yep, thank you.
Counselor Member Volin?
Okay. So here's my take, and this is related to the admin fee that we've been discussing all night. I want to echo Mr. Rooker's sentiments, you know? And Mr. Sims has actually made a similar point. You know, the reason that the word predatory is used by people who don't know any better is because they don't know any better. They don't know what the costs are, they don't know what the prices are, and people do charge different prices. So the result is, you're, if you get towed, you don't know how much you might be affected to pay. And people are, as we have, have heard, shocked by the number. That said, it's not unfair to ask the question, well, what would a fair administrative fee be? It doesn't mean that we have to charge it as a separate fee. As Mr. Rooker said, we could increase the base fee. If anything, I think that a separate admin fee is a bit more transparent because as the gentleman who just spoke said, he only gets paid based on the, the tow fee. And he wouldn't get a cut of the administrative fee unless it was rolled into the tow fee. So, you know, we've learned a lot just tonight about the different expenses that tow companies worried about and that individual tow employees worry about. Okay? So it's not unreasonable to ask the question, should there be a fee and what should the fee be? You know, like it's, it's how the tow industry works. You know, like, it's how the tow industry works. Now, having said that, I don't know, based on what I've heard tonight, what the tow fee should be. I don't have a recommendation. I've heard 25, 50, and 65 is the range, okay? And the result would be, let's assume that we allow the prices to be what the tow companies have suggested tonight. 135 tow, 35 dolly, and let's just go with a max of 65 for the admin fee. Let's leave daily storage out of it. We're looking at $235. And as several people have said, we're looking at a minimum of $200 for a tow based on these prices. Now, it's up to those of us talking about it to evangelize, if you will, to those people who might be affected by toes, many of whom have an unearned privilege. They believe they can park wherever they want to, and should be immune from toes. And every tow, every employee of a tow company has dealt with that privileged sort, who thinks that they should be immune from the costs of their actions. And so, you know, we don't want to throw tow companies under the bus, and we don't necessarily want to gouge people who are harder up, or, you know, have it more difficult than others. So we're trying to find a fair way to do things. One I know is that I don't know tonight. I don't know how to do this tonight. I don't know enough. I've learned a lot tonight, but I'm not ready to amend it or make a recommendation. I feel like I need more time on this. But just to clarify, that's what I'm trying to do.
That is my question. This amendment had no sponsor, and when you posed this question, you were just fishing for information. You're not sponsoring it.
I'm happy to sponsor it, I just don't know, because we had to introduce it to talk about it. But I mean, I'm happy to, you know, like, withdraw it for the time being, and reintroduce it when we're ready.
Okay.
But it's, I mean, I feel like it's important to discuss it. I don't know what the outcome should be. If anybody else has guidance on...
We have one more person in line. I will entertain your comments, sir, and see if you can shed any additional light here before we make a final statement on this one. Put it to bed.
Thank you. Give it to me one more time. Ken Barishkins, Westside. What Mike Ricker explained a while ago, I couldn't agree with anymore. I think that was a phenomenal statement that he made. We, as a towing company, for city-initiated toes, we've done for 20 years, almost 20 years. I think I've seen everybody here in council. We talked about $65 during the night, $55 during the day. And we went 20 years before the city allowed us to have a raise to go to 125. And I'm going to tell you, that was a phenomenal price rate for us. But we still survived at $65 a tow. We still survived at the $25 a day storage. And I'm personally going to tell you, I think it's absurd of some of the prices that they're asking for administration fees, because I think it's crazy. I may join friends tonight because of this, and I may not. But if they think their overhead is more than mine, I'd like to share some books, because I disagree. My cost of doing business as towing is no different than theirs. These prices are, in my opinion, absurd and high, and it's not fair to the customers and the consumers who are doing this. I agree that they should pay a fine. I should agree that they should pay their tow bill. I do not agree that they should let their however car for free, just because they want to come and get it, and choose that they don't want to. But I think the fair price should be fair and fair to everybody, and I don't believe the customer should have to pay for policing and/or anything else for administration fees for people. And by the way, IU has just started this administration fee, and if you call them on the phone, they cannot give you a true definition of an administration fee. They ask you to do whatever. Call them and ask them yourself if you'd like to get a definition of administration fees. They cannot give it to you. Okay? So with that being said, I still think we need to go back to the original price. I couldn't agree with him more. And I'm sorry to be difficult, but I think we're moving in a good path with what they originally done.
And just to be...
And I think the administration fee is just absolutely absurd to begin with.
Just to be clear, when you say going back to the original price, are you talking about the $25 as it was written in this proposed amendment?
If you're going to allow resolution, maybe in a year, because when we had this speak, this, what, six months ago, I think, when we changed the city ordinance to allow the rates to go up, we said we would revisit these fees in one to two years, did we not? I think we can all agree that that's what we said, we would revisit these fees. IU, state, city, or county, I'm sorry, they opted to jump a year before you get, you guys did, because they were at 125. They opted to jump a little bit earlier. That's where they took the fees. I didn't initiate those fees, they brought them to me. Okay? Yeah, I would love to make $205 per tow, just because they called me, because I'm going to doling, I'm going to do administration fee, and I'm going to do this. At that point in price, we're at the same price they were at to begin with for a private towing. I'm just saying, I think the prices they're asking for is absurd, it's too high.
And so, once again, are we talking about the $25 here for the administrative expenses, or are you just talking about the flat fee?
I'm saying the administration fee, period.
Okay.
Shouldn't even be there.
Everybody clear?
Yeah.
The cost of doing business, the 125 or 135 for a tow, $25 or $35 for dollies as a labor to work, those drivers earn it, the company earns it, in my opinion. When they get extra money for dollies, that's hard work, them guys do earn it, not going to lie about it. But those prices also incurred is also what's left over at the end of the business, to pay your fee, pay your bills, pay your drivers, buy your licensing, your insurance, your trucks, everything else covers everything just fine. But if, no different than any city contract, I can't depend on my business for the city to pay my bills. I can't depend on the Indiana State Police calling me for every accident to pay my bills. As a business owner, I go out and drum up business, I find things. If this ordinance is the only thing that's going to justify my business, I may look into something different.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are back to council for any final statement on this particular amendment.
Again, I really don't want to talk more about this tonight. It's not ready to vote on. I don't, I mean, I've heard enough testimony to know that I don't know. I do think we need to finish thinking about it. It's up to the council what it wants to do, whether to send to another committee of the whole in two weeks, or to send it back to council next week.
You mean this amendment?
The whole ordinance, including this amendment. I mean, if the council goes back to the full, if the committee of the whole goes back to the full council next week, I'll do what I can, I don't know what to make of it.
Okay, so, again, with the Amendment Four that's on the table right now...
I'm happy to withdraw it for the time being. I don't really want to vote on it.
Is that what you wish to do, to just dispatch with that particular matter?
Yeah, unless there's another comment on it.
Any other comment down here? Councilmember Sky Mularry?
Thank you. I actually have some questions that I was holding that didn't neatly fit into any of the amendments.
I'm happy to entertain them, I don't mean to withdraw it before you get it.
No, they are larger discussions, actually. So I think for that reason, it may be helpful to go to another committee of the whole.
The suggestion is for it to go to another committee of the whole?
You mean this amendment, or the whole ordinance?
I don't know. What are you, are you referring to this particular amendment, or the entire thing?
I think she's got bigger questions for the overall ordinance.
Point of order.
Because Mr. Volin sounds like he's willing to withdraw this amendment, and then we can then go to the committee, to the ordinance as a whole.
Point of order.
Yeah.
My point by withdrawing it now is just, that I can reintroduce it, it just would end the conversation on it tonight.
Right.
But like, I had planned to reintroduce it, once I knew how to fix it.
Okay.
But I don't know how to fix it right now.
Attorney Sherman, how do we withdraw this?
It was earlier, the amendment. It looks like you're all agreed to unanimous consent to accept withdrawal of the amendment.
I move unanimous consent to withdraw Amendment Four?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? Can we do a...
Just voice vote unanimous consent.
Voice vote?
All in favor?
Down the row, we can't do voice votes on these, but all does...
Yes.
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 All right, so we dispatched with Amendment Four, we are now going back to the ordinance as a whole. Sponsor, Councilmember Sims, you wish to make...
Going to the ordinance as a whole. Oh, thank you.
We've been dispatching with amendments.
You're absolutely right.
Now we go back to the amendment, which we can then decide, do we want to refer to another discussion, or do pass it tonight?
Correct. But before we do that, I want to check with Mr. Sherman. Part of this discussion is that we would take it back to another committee of the whole in two weeks. Do we not have the option to deal with this at regular session next week, and resolve it at that point? Or not?
Yes.
I'm trying not to take this two more weeks to a committee of the whole.
Yeah, one of the suggestions from the draft motion tonight was, at the end of this discussion, we can either continue the committee deliberation on February 26th, or return the ordinance to the council with a do-pass recommendation. Councilmember Volin?
I would respectfully ask that we go to a second committee. We have a pretty full agenda on the 19th. There's a, I mean, I, you know, have enough on my plate as it is without trying to figure out how to fix this amendment. You know, like, that, moving to pass on the 19th is tantamount to leaving out discussion of the administrative fee. I don't know that I'm going to be able to prepare an amendment in time. I'd have to get it done by tomorrow or Friday, at least to get it into a packet. We've got conflicting evidence, you know, whatever the council wants to do, but this is why I thought that it should go all the way through to March 4th. Thank you.
Is there a second for that?
The committee of the whole cannot continue itself. We have to recommit the committee of the whole at the 19th. That's the problem with this form. Mr. Sherman?
I believe when this matter was referred to the committee of the whole, it gave the committee of the whole the option to pick it up for the next committee of the whole, so it can do that, and that's one possibility.
Well, then, that's what I recommend.
And that's what you were proposing.
Yes.
It can go back to, you can report back next week if you wish. If you're undecided, you could have a recommendation that essentially, it appears on your agenda next week, but you recommend consideration at a further date like March 4th. Those are, so different approaches.
I move that we recommit to committee of the whole on February 26th.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, I would defer to Councilperson Volin, since he sets the agenda, or sets the schedule to the council, and if he feels as though it's, you know, it's getting pressed, that we should respect that.
Yeah.
Any other comment? Councilmember Laye, already?
Yeah. Councilmember Volin cited conflicting evidence, or not enough evidence to figure out what to do with a possible Amendment Four administrative fee, and a lack of ability to deal with it in the next two days. But I guess I'm wondering what evidence you think will come to light that will allow you to craft something meaningful? I mean, there's, to Mr. Rooker's point, it's kind of, at some point, a case can be made always for some different amount, and at some point, we're just going to have to decide what we think is reasonable and go with it. And whether that's building in the admin fee into the base rate, and just dispensing of the idea of an admin fee altogether, and saying, you know, 175, 185, whatever the case is, this is what you can charge, and that's it. So I guess my question is, what do you think we can accomplish at committee of the whole that necessitates that? I'm just curious to hear more.
Well, I don't think the committee of the whole has to be long. As everyone knows, I did not recommend a committee of the whole, did not want to impose that on everybody, but I lost a train of thought, because it's late, and this is part of the point. I'm tired. I've been thinking for the past five hours, and trying to stay focused, and open to everyone. This is really a vote on whether or not we want to consider the question at all of the administrative fee. And I would ask you to ask them whether you think you've done enough thinking on it. If somebody else wants to propose a different amendment between now and next week, they can. If someone wants me to continue working on this amendment, then, you know, like, with land use committee, we have two weeks between the two hearings. And one of the, and the first week is the time that we have, just tonight, we recommitted to a second meeting of the land use committee. We have a week, we asked the members of the committee to come up with whatever reasonable conditions they're going to have by next Wednesday at noon. And that goes into the packet on Friday, and people have a chance to review them before they're discussed. So there's no time to do that in one week. This has been the point all along. If I have time to develop a better amendment, or I can consult with people, anyone who has an interest in it, including members of council, that's enough time. If not, if a council, effectively, the council will be voting on no administrative fee if we don't recommit to a meeting on the 26th.
Councilmember Sims?
Like Councilmember Rallo, part of, and I think we have a motion on the floor, I can agree with that. But I will say, he was also correct in that the president sets the agenda, or we talk about that. And as the president has so eloquently stated, that that's part of the problem, in that he's tired, and so are all of us. But then I'll go back to where we schedule and plan on the agenda, and if this is a problem at 11:30 on a Wednesday night, then let's talk about that at Tuesday afternoon at 4:00 in the afternoon. And that's all I have to say, and thank you. And I'm not so sure it even requires a response, but you have that right, Mr. President.
Any other comment?
I will remind Mr. Sims that I've consistently suggested to him that we take more calendar time, so that we don't have to be talking after 11:00 PM. This is the thing everybody's been trying to go against. So with all due respect, this ordinance, if it was more ready, we wouldn't have been sending it to so much discussion. It needed more work, and it's not a reflection on Councilmember Sims, or the people who developed it before him. But legislation needs time, calendar time, not clock time. I would urge you to recommit to the 26th. Thank you.
I would just like to state that I'm not necessarily in favor of hashing this out again. We've been through this quite a bit. We've gotten great feedback from the stakeholders. We got an extra opportunity to have more back and forth than we normally do from public comment. I agree with some of the things that staff has said, that this is kind of unusual for us to tilt the scales so much in favor. I'm ready to go. I would be ready to return the ordinance to the council with some sort of a recommendation tonight. So I won't necessarily be supporting this, but I certainly respect people on the council who feel that this needs more baking. I'm ready to vote on it tonight.
Recommend do-pass.
Councilmember Laye?
Or say, call the question.
One last point of clarification, I just, I don't, I don't think it was intentional, I don't think you answered my question, which was, do you think there is more information that you can learn in two weeks' time?
Yes.
That will make this better? You think there is something that you can find out?
Yes.
Because we did hear information about it tonight, of course, but, okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Just to clarify, are you, is it your proposal to send this entire ordinance minus Amendment Four to council next week, or is that, am I understanding correctly?
At that point in time, an amendment could be proposed during the regular session, if somebody does want to bring that back into it with more clarity than we were able to discuss.
Okay. So do we vote on each amendment next week?
So what, if we were, and, you know, this is not what's on the table, what's on the table is to refer it back to another committee of the whole discussion. So we'll either be voting that up or down in just a few minutes. I'm just stating, my preference is to return it to a regular session, where any amendment work could be done at that point, based on what we have been through already.
Got it. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Anything else? All right, we've had a motion, have we had a second on this?
Call the question.
All right. So let me start on the left with, this is moving it to the committee of the whole on